Okay, back to order of the successor agency for dissolving the city solid redevelopment agency special joint meeting. Back to order. Report from our attorney.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council and the successor agency board. The city council and successor agency met in closed session. The city council met in closed session with respect to the public employment item. Direction was given to the city attorney's office. No final action was taken, nothing further to report, nothing further was discussed. With respect to the real property item, the city council and successor agency board met in closed session. Direction was given to the city attorney's office and city staff. Nothing further was discussed, no final action was taken. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank you. We're gonna adjourn. We need a motion to adjourn that successor agency.
So move. Second.
Okay, roll call please.
After we adjourn, we're going to.
Okay, we're gonna adjourn the successor agency and go into city council regular meeting. Okay, our pastor here, Pastor Maria, do the invocation.
Gracious God, we thank you for this day you have given us, for the blessings you pour out upon us, and the challenges you place before us. We give you thanks for the freedoms and responsibilities we have as citizens of this beautiful city. We thank you especially for those who work so hard to make living in Selma a blessing for so many. For our first responders, for all of the city employees, and for those who serve faithfully as elected officials. We are grateful also for all the volunteers who served in so many capacities, and for those who took time out of their busy lives to come to this meeting tonight. We give you thanks for all their gifts and talents and their dedication to the people of this, your city. Lord, we ask that you give us all patience and tolerance, so that our discourse together this evening may be civil and courteous. Help us put aside our personal differences for the good of the city, and to treat one another with respect and love as you would have us do. We ask all these things in the name of your son and Lord Jesus Christ.
Can I ask you all to stand, please? Want to mean salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Durk.
Here.
Councilmember Franco.
Here.
Councilmember Montiel.
Here.
Mayor Protem Robertson.
Here.
Mayor Oliver.
Here. Okay, next item, potential conflict interest. Any council has a potential conflict interest, they identify the item and excuse themselves from discussing and voting on the item. Anybody here? Okay, we'll move on. We have some special presentations tonight. Community development block grant is one of them, and Boys and Girls Club presentation. Community block grant, state your name and.
While he's fixing his mic, basically what you're seeing is presentation regarding our community block grants. Uh, what we're attempting to do is give council a time to review what that aspect of financing for project means and what it can and can't do for the city, and look into a little more of a, a long-term objective, how we utilize these funds, how we've used it in the past, and kind of get a timeline on where we'd like to go with these, these funds that are available.
Can you all hear me now?
Yep.
Wonderful. Uh, my name is Daniel Bond, I'm one of your city engineers, and as Isaac stated, we're here to discuss tonight potential CDBG funding projects, uh, for this year and for years to come. So what we're really looking for is, uh, guidance, not necessarily tonight, but guidance on the coming year project, because we do have an application due, and then guidance for future projects, so that as each year's application comes, uh, we have a focus as your engineering staff to make recommendations, uh, on which projects, uh, follow your guidelines, so we can focus ourselves on budgeting and so on. Um, so first, I want to give you some guidelines as to what projects we can do with the funding. Um, this is federal funding through community development block grants. We annually get somewhere in the neighborhood of, uh, two hundred and forty thousand dollars. I know the coming year that we're applying for is slightly reduced to about two hundred and ten thousand. So that's the normal range we're, uh, we're seeing annually. As you can see on the exhibit, um, the city of Selma is outlined in the darker line around the perimeter. The yellow line that you see is actually the funding area that is, uh, fundable through the CG, CDBG monies. It's not, uh, the monies can't be applied just anywhere in the city, it's specific to that yellow outline. Um, there is an exception to that, in that if we're doing projects that, um, benefit the entire community, such as ADA projects, uh, throughout the community, um, or maybe a regional park, things of that nature that, that are not limited to a specific area outside of those limits, those can be fundable. Raina, can you move on to the eligible projects list? There you go. Yep, you had it, appendix two. It should be the first page. There you go. Okay, so there's a very specific list of eligible activities. Um, you'll see item A, water system improvements, uh, being that the city does not own the water system, that's, uh, not something we would want to entertain. Uh, sewer system improvements, uh, is certainly an option, uh, and that's one that I'll discuss later on, uh, as I'm looking at more specifics. Uh, street and drainage improvements, that's an area that we've focused on, uh, almost every year, quite honestly, for the ten, twelve years that we've been doing this, uh, when I've been on board. Uh, we've done a number of storm drain projects, and, uh, most frequently are doing street improvement projects, which also includes upgrading those streets to, uh, upgrade ADA ramps and sidewalks and driver approaches, so that we provide a handicap path of travel along with the street improvements that we do. Fire protection improvements, uh, includes fire stations, hydrants, uh, and fire protection equipment. Uh, neighborhood facilities, uh, single or multi-purpose facilities to provide health, social recreational, recreational or similar services, as well as branch libraries and facilities for specific groups such as senior citizens and the handicapped. Uh, we can do park and recreation facilities. Actually, we have a current project now where we're, uh, replacing the restroom at Ringo Park with CDBG monies. Uh, solid waste facilities and equipment. We've got, uh, housing rehabilitation and down payment assistance, uh, special economic development, uh, such as grants, loans, loan guarantees, interest subsidies to businesses. Public services, we've got employment training, crime prevention, childcare, recreation, senior youth career, youth center programs, or help for the needy and homeless. We can also do historic preservation, property acquisition and disposition, uh, such as we acquired the property for the Valley View Basin here a few years back. Property clearance, targeted proactive code enforcement, commercial and industrial rehabilitation. So all those items are on the table as potential projects, again, with the focus, we've got to look at the area that we're serving, um, if we're not doing a, a regionally beneficial project. Can you go on to the next one? We also have ineligible activities. Civic buildings such as city halls, courthouses, police stations are not eligible for CDBG monies. Uh, operating and/or maintenance expenses, political activities, uh, we cannot purchase equipment, and, uh, new housing construction is also exempt. So that's the criteria we have to work with as far as the types of project we can and cannot do. Raina, can you go to the history? There we go. Now, to give you an idea of what we have done, just, uh, for frame of reference, uh, I've tabulated here back to two thousand and six, um, because this is pretty much the, the years I can speak to with any authority. Um, you can see in two thousand and six, we did various street and alley improvements. Uh, two thousand and seven, we did specific, uh, work on Nebraska and Bowder Street. Uh, two thousand and eight, again downtown street and alley improvements. Nine, various street and alley improvements. Twenty ten, we did, uh, work in East Rose Estates and the Mitchell Avenue improvements there off of, um, off of Nebraska. Uh, again, eleven various street and alley improvements. Two thousand and twelve, um, two thousand and twelve was the year after we had finished the major storm drain project that we did with, uh, the America, American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. So that project, uh, actually got moved so that we could extend on that project, because there was a street improvement project planned that year, and so we flopped the year so that we could do the street work after the storm drain went in. Um, we followed, following year with Evergreen and Pine Street improvements, then next year Sylvia Street and Alley improvements. We're now working on the Ringo Park restroom, and, uh, this coming year project, uh, we have a storm drain project planned, uh, related to, um, mitigating issues related to the state pump and the discharge pipeline, uh, in the backyards of various residents along that discharge line. So those are the kinds of projects we've done. As I said, our primary focus over the last, you know, ten years or more, uh, from council has been to focus primarily on streets, and, uh, so that's really what I'm looking for over the next couple of weeks. I plan to come back maybe to the next meeting or the meeting thereafter, with some guidance from council as far as where that focus needs to be, whether it's streets or sewers or, um, ADA, those sorts of things. So what I want to do is, is go over a few, uh, ideas on projects, just to, um, kind of give you some, some models of what could be done with the annual monies that we receive. Uh, this first project, um, not real clear on this photo, but thi- this is Second Street coming into town, um, actually, City Hall is just off the right-hand corner of, of the sheet there. Um, this is coming in onto McCall in front of Lincoln Park, and, uh, the street, Second Street and McCall, and then High Street to the west there are all, um, definitely in the process of failing. They're pretty severe alligator, and you can see that, uh, that those streets are, uh, a prime target for rehabilitation. So that's one project that, uh, I would suggest as a possibility. The next one, this is a, a much broader area and would need to be a long-term focus. Um, I call this the alphabet streets, uh, A through E. Um, those streets are also in very bad shape, they have, uh, very little ADA, uh, compliant, uh, facilities, uh, handicap ramps, curb ramps are all, uh, well out of compliance. Many of the areas have sidewalks missing, driveways missing, uh, drainage problems, trip hazards, as well as roads that were built on oil cake. I mean, th- they are in need of serious repair. We do have a very large area, however, to, uh, to mitigate. It would take probably ten years to fund this much work, um, but it is one area that, uh, should be considered. The next one, this is the SKF master plan map. You can see, uh, a number of lines that are designated in red. Those areas are areas that have been designated as need for replacement. Uh, those pipes are either undersized, too flat, um, subject to, to some, uh, some problem in the operations of the system. Um, my thought on this, there's some areas that, um, are more prime for replacement in that they could help, uh, free up some of the development burdens that we have right now, such as, uh, you can see right there off of Nebraska Avenue, any development that would occur in that area would require, uh, two sets of pipelines to be, uh, upsized and replaced i- in order to allow further development to our, our southwest, uh, part of the city. So that would be another area that, uh, should be considered as part of, of the ADA, or, excuse me, the CDBG funding. And, uh, lastly, I don't really need an exhibit for this one, but several years back, we did a, um, uh, an ADA transition plan where the entire city was analyzed, every city-owned building was reviewed for, uh, ADA barriers, both interior and in the public right-of-way. Uh, and that plan, uh, is in place, and the city is, uh, under obligation to proceed with as much of this as we can, as budgets allow. Uh, we have done many projects, uh, that follow this, these guidelines, but there are many that, uh, need to be of consideration with the CDBG monies that are coming in. So, um, going through and, and fixing curb ramps, fixing sidewalks, uh, fixing ADA parking, and removing barriers to those with disabilities is certainly, uh, a viable project for CDBG monies, and, uh, because it is considered a, um, an improvement that benefits the entire public versus, um, a specific area that we're not limited geographically with, with those types of projects. So with that, uh, open up any questions you have of me.
What, um, what kind of infrastructure improvements would it, would it fund? You know, it bought that, that recharge basin at Valley View.
Mm-hmm.
How about the conveyances to get it there? Could it be used towards, towards that?
It, it could be. The problem with that is.
From the storm drains?
The storm drain, we're actually doing the first phase of that with this coming year's project, um, and anticipating a budget of about three hundred and seventy thousand dollars, I believe. Um, that's part of why this coming year's funding is a little bit less than normal, because we've moved some of the money forward to make this project viable. Um, the remainder of that project, we anticipate is going to be somewhere in the two and a half to three million dollar range, and.
This is just the planning phase, right?
Um, well, it, we're, we're in design now, but we, we have the first piece, um, scheduled for this coming year's construction. I guess what we can do with that is tie into the basin, as well as divert water from the state pump and the Salazar Park pump, uh, into the basin. So that, and that's, we're doing that because this last year, we had, you know, all the, the heavy flood releases, and what was actually happening is the canal was running so high that water was backing up into the discharge pipe and pressurizing the discharge pipe from the state pump, and it was showing signs of leaking, um, because that pipe was actually built on the top of the backyard in that neighborhood, and then dirt was just piled on top of it for backfill.
That's a problem waiting to happen.
And that's a problem waiting to happen, so that's why we, um, found the first source of funding we could to mitigate that issue, and that, that piece of construction will happen this coming year. Uh, but again, the, the funding that's available through CBG is in the two hundred and ten to two hundred and fifty thousand dollar a year range. To do the, um, project would take ten years' worth of the funding. So it, it's not that we can't tap that against other funds as well, but we can't, we can't work with CDBG to allocate ten years' worth of funds, or save ten years' worth of funds. They'll usually with us operate in about a three-year cycle, where you can save three years, and what they'll do is each year, um, if, say, we don't want to use our allocation, they'll look for another city to take our allocation, and they can then borrow against their future and so on. So there's a lot of horse trading that goes on, but we can't do it on that level.
How about the, um, the sounds for when you're crossing? I've noticed we're hitting miss on that.
Right. I'm only aware of one signal, I believe, in the city that we, we just did in the last two years, because we had a specific resident, uh, who was visually impaired, uh, that walked a specific path to work every day, and so, um, we immediately went through and, and added the, uh, the audible detectors at, at the intersection to, for that individual. Um, we could certainly do that citywide, that would be a very viable project and well within the funding limits, uh, of what we have available.
How well do you work, um, with other departments in the city? So, my goal would be to maximize the CDBG monies, perhaps by dovetailing in with another entity, and then kind of like a joint venture, say for instance, SKF. If you're talking about work along Nebraska, taking CDBG money to work with SKF to start that type of a project. Do you work with SKF? Do you work with other entities?
A- absolutely. We, we do work with SKF both on my private level and, uh, as the city engineer for Selma, we meet with them fairly frequently. Um, they typically don't do a lot of those projects because they're developer-driven. Um, but if they had funding allocated for such work, we would certainly, um, could co-mingle those funds and put together a larger project, or a series of projects, uh, with, with both the CDBG monies and the SKF dollars to make it happen.
And you're going to be coming back to us providing details on all of these projects, so?
Well, what I'm looking for on the short term is to get some guidance from council with regards to what kind of projects you want us to focus on. I mean, I, I could put together a list of a hundred projects and, and, you know, we could talk about them for quite some time, but.
Right.
What I'd like to do is get some kind of focus, do you want us to focus on streets, sewer, ADA, um, those sorts of things, and then I can come back to you with more specific recommendations. And if you've got even specific areas where you have concerns, we can target projects for those, because ultimately, I can come up with hundreds of projects for us to do, but I need, I want to do what's, you know, at the council's will, um, to do what's right for the community. So we'll set projects that work within the funding limits based on your guidance.
So, and I'd like to hear from everybody in the community, people have ideas about the city, where they want to see these improvements. Please let me know. Come by, or email me, or text me. Anybody who's watching, same thing, let me know what your concerns are.
One quick question.
Yes.
This first project, the, um, the down, basically the downtown area.
Yes.
Is our round of funding enough to complete that in one, in one sweep, or is?
Oh, in one cycle? I believe so. I haven't costed out this specific project yet, but based on its size and scale, um, we should be able to do that. If not, we would, uh, we can target the, we can manipulate the scope of work to fit within our, our budgets.
And then any street that, like, kind of what Tom Form and Montiel were saying, any streets that we rip up, we, we reach out, like, say to your SKF and say, hey, this is open, or Cal Water, this is open, so if you need to do any maintenance, um, improvement and stuff?
Right. We, we have regular meetings where, when we have specific projects planned, we communicate those, those issues and, and try and get work done before, before we, uh, rip up the streets, for sure.
And I know that y- you guys work together, you know, Cal Water, you know, sort of the SKF, you guys are in close contact, I know you guys meet, uh, but, you know, like Scott says, the citizen need to know what, what, what they want to see in their community, you know? Uh, you know, right now we fixed floral, looks good, you know, uh, you know, down the road, we want to see other roads fixed too, but also, we need, uh, to help infrastructure, you know, in our community, help grow, and, um, that's a vital entity in itself right now, and I know we, we don't have a whole lot of money, we have to work what we have, and priority is what we need, and I think the, the citizens have got to be aware of, of that kind of magnitude, what we, what we're dealing with, you know? And they want to see what's actually going on, what they want, they want to happen, if they want to wait three years to get this done over here, or, but, eh, eh, you know, time is money, and you want to get things done right away, so I, I understand that, but we don't want to lose money either at the same time. But, uh, everything's looking good in the city of Selma, everything moving forward. The engineering department's moving good, you guys are doing a good job. I, I, I commend you guys.
Thank you.
Uh, working together with other entities, and, and keep it up. Any more questions from the council?
Thank you. Thank you.
What, what was the? At this point, since we are just having an open discussion, maybe think about the topics a little more, go through some of the lists and the items, and then we can have more of a formal, um, kind of punch list as far as the direction. You can give us more direction on that standpoint, as far as you want us to focus on streets, you want us to focus on sewer. This is more of a, an educational tool to kind of get you guys in a, a mindset of where do we want to go, to kind of for- forecast our projects.
I'd like to hear from the citizens. I need, I need time to get input from the citizens, as well as drive around as well and, and take a look.
Okay, well, let, let me see what I can put together as far as, um, a more formal presentation with.
It'll have to be a multifaceted, uh, information. I, we need to hear from the engineers, and if you could prioritize what, in your opinion, your professional appearing, opinion, what would be the highest priority, and then we can take citizens' concerns, overlay those, and if there's an overlap, then that would be obviously where we need to start. But, uh, we do need to hear from our citizens, but we also need to hear from the professionals, and, um, because, you know, citizens can't see, say for instance, the sewer issues of the SKF master plan, where you have all of those, the inner-city Selma, the historic part of Selma, those lines are critical. That I do know for a fact, but that's not something that the average citizen would know, not knowing the condition of the lines underneath the street, um, and not knowing, for instance, ABC streets, that it's oil cake, and, and those things. Those are the kinds of things that we depend upon professionals to give us, that the average citizen may not be able to provide for us. And so I think that we need to take our citizens' input, take your input, take our collective inputs as a council, overlap them, and then if there's, um, an overlap, then obviously I think that's something that's important to you, to us, and to the citizens, and might perhaps yield the direction that we ought to go in. So I think we would have to agendize this now, Isaac, for a fu- a future meeting.
Sure, you can do that.
So I'll go back to my original comment, like, a couple weeks.
Yeah.
Think about it and get citizen input.
And the input from the public.
What would you say, our next meeting, the fourth? Is that enough time, two weeks?
Um, we might want to push it out a little bit more, just because there's such a wide array. Want the, is the fourth fine with you? You want to go with that, or?
The seventeenth?
I would go with the next meeting, yeah. The.
That gives us a month.
The seventeenth meeting, yeah, just so we can reach out to the public and.
Are we in any danger of losing funds if we take an extra two weeks for this?
No, no, that's fine. The, the CDBG applications, the allocation of money is allocated, um, and the, I've talked to the folks at CDBG, and they don't really start their environmental reviews and such until the first of the year. I don't want to push it out that far, because I, I do have a lot of work to put the application, application together, so I really, for the, for the workshop, I need to come out, or the next meeting, I need to come out of that meeting with, with a project for this coming year. Um, for future years, um, we can have discussions every year, but what I would be looking for is generally guidance. What direction do we want ahead?
We probably shouldn't include future years, though, because that could be different councils, right?
I'd like to see a.
Stick to a year, too.
I'd like to see like a five-year lookout, if possible.
Five year.
Yeah, and then we can, we can target, you know, five years' worth of projects and, and come to some consensus on that.
Year by year?
Yes.
Not one project that will take five years to complete, but?
We, we can only go out maybe two to three years. Um, Selma is, does receive some of the, probably the largest funding of any of the, um, the local cities that are in this program, um, so it's, it's a little more difficult for us to bank dollars, because finding other communities that can, um, take those dollars and, and not expend more than they have to offer is, is a little bit complicated. It's a lot easier for some of the smaller cities, um, to do that versus Selma.
You know, I really appreciate your coming here for our input, this is the first time. I really appreciate in a while that there's been the funds to do this, and I appreciate your coming to the council, so we can get input from the citizens and get your informed input and go from there.
You're welcome.
So basically, what I hear you saying is that we need to use it or lose it?
You know, it's not.
Potentially.
Not so much use it or lose it.
It's more that we need to identify the project.
It's a city's money, but we, we have work that we have to do to get it allocated to actually use it. Um, and the, the community development block grant group has obligations to the federal government as far as how much money they spend and by when, and if we're not meeting our spending obligations, it hurts them. So, you know, more than anything, to keep our relationship strong with the county and the group that does that work, you know, they want us to spend the money. They, they don't want us to sit on it.
Right.
They, they need, they have to meet certain spending requirements every year, and so it's our job to help them do that.
We can help with that.
Thank you.
This is federal money, Dan?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, yeah, we'll agendize, we'll open up the public comment at that point and get some more feedback, and.
Okay.
This will be a public hearing item when it comes back?
It'll be agendized items.
It's agendized, so we will have public comment.
And, and just, so you know, once we define the project for the coming year, prior to entering into contract with CDBG, we actually will have a public hearing at council as well.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next item, the Boys and Girls Club presentation. Mark?
Mark, gee, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, uh, city council. Um, so tonight I come to you with our, uh, two-year video that was recorded at our two-year Um, so the video was recorded and, and edited by a gentleman by the name of Jose Moreno. Um, it's amazing what he took the words from me and, uh, made the video just really, uh, it's something, and it's gonna, it's gonna touch my heart, so, uh, go ahead, Raina.
Thank you very much for coming out, let's have some fun. To me, the club is, the club is life, the club is home. You know, it's, it's just a great feeling to work, work here and work at this club. If, if you're not loving your job, then you're in the wrong job, and, and it's great to wake up and, and be thankful, thankful for, for coming to, to the city of Selma every Today is the two-year anniversary of the Selma Boys and Girls Club. For me.
For me and several club members, it's, it's our birthday. And I say it's our birthday because they've been here from day one, and they still continue to come. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out today. Some children can't afford to go on extra field trips. We, we always do some kind of fundraising within the club, uh, whether it be salad chips, water, and it goes to the kids that can't afford to go on those summer trips. We plan to take anywhere from twenty to forty members or children that come to the Boys and Girls Club to go to Disneyland in December. We can always be volunteers. Here at my club, we only have myself and two staff members. We can have anywhere from twenty to, to forty children at a time during the day. Summertime, we go up to about sixty, sixty club members. Some of my club members have, have been gone through some troubles. The, the troubles they've gone through have, have been involving their lives with the law enforcement. To see those, those club members change, uh, it's great. It's great. That means myself and my staff are doing their job. If it wasn't for me, if it wasn't for me losing my mom, I lost my mom to cancer. Unfortunately, when my mom was sick, I lost my, my job in Fresno, working for a phone call center. I had to take care of my mom. So when my mom ended up passing away, my job in Fresno ended up letting me go. And then I started volunteering at the Boys and Girls Club in Fresno, over by the Fredgrounds. And then that's where everything started. Started volunteering, became a program assistant, program director, and now I'm a unit director. So if it wasn't for my mom, I would have never walked through the doors of the Boys and Girls Club. And I'm very thankful for my mom, even though she's up, up in the sky watching down on me, so. So uh, a- as you can see, it, it touches my heart um, quite a bit, day to day. I wish I could have brought everybody that's at the club right now. You know, school started back up, we're out and about, hitting the back-to-school nights, um, carnivals. Going to go to the uh, school board, um, we're targeting those, those children that are not getting in the after-school program. You know, um, but like I said, the gentleman, his name is Jose Moreno. He designed the flyer, the poster that we put out for the two-year anniversary. This gentleman, it was a blessing for me. Great gentleman, great gentleman. He was going to be here tonight, but unfortunately couldn't make it out, just so you could get to meet him. Some of the members, Daisy right here, she's the one that's been with me for two years, two and a half years. Some of the other ones that I mentioned in the video, they're here, but uh, I won't mention them just because, for their, their safety and their protection, you know? But uh, they're the ones that are mentioned in that video. Nate, Nate back here, he's a program assistant. So, but um, anyways, uh, just wanted to share with you that, that little three-minute video. And uh, thank you. Just like I said, thank you for allowing us to be here.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Mark, thank you for coming to Salma to be a part of our community. The little people, they're a part of you as well.
Oh, yeah.
In big time.
Yeah, they are. They're, they're definitely part of me. It's why I shut my phone off at eight o'clock at night. Just kidding. They know, they know, they know they can count, they know they can count on me and the staff. They know we're, we're there for them. My mom's still making connections within the city of Salma, people within the school district and stuff, that are offering to get the, the books for the, the, the club members that are going to, to the high school now, so that they don't have to lug the books from the school to the club. And, and they're able to come to the club and have their, their books and have access to them and stuff, so. But um, thank you very much. Just wanted to share that, and uh, we're going to be leaving, because we still have to go back to the club and close up everything, so. Thank you, folks.
You've got to do homework tonight.
Oh, yeah. They, that's, that's power hour. Power hour is the first thing when they come in. So, homework. Thank you, folks. You have a good evening.
Thank you, Mark. Thanks, guys, for coming. Thank you very much. That said, be done. Okay. Next item, consent counter. All, all items under consent counter category under routine. All complete consent counter can be exact by one... Oh, I forgot. I jumped the gun here. I'm sorry. I apologize, public. This is a, this is a time for the public uh, can come forward and invest City Council on, over the, within the jurisdiction of the council. No action will be discussed or taken on the agenda, or issue will be referred back to a city manager. Who are you? Uh, the member of the public has remarks of three minutes. Anybody want to come forward and make a comment? State your name and come forward.
Hi. My name is Jesse Cortinar. I live uh, behind the high school at twenty-six eleven Dennis. And my concern's about uh, code enforcement. What do we do when we have neighbors that are mostly, you know, my mom's been there since the houses were built, so about like forty years old already on that side. You got um, when they were built, I was like, maybe twelve years old. When we moved out that way, when that was just dirt. But now that, all these decades, now you got all these issues coming up. So I'd like to have my side of my town, uh, blocks, um, bring up the issue about code enforcement, because there's a couple of issues that um, some of the neighbors that are renters, they're using their, their uh, garages as industrial, like bringing trailers and bringing uh, um, vegetation like in and out, like it's a warehouse, you know? My mom's retired. She's seventy-five years old. She retired from Salma Hospital. And, you know, she's talking about the fumes, the, I'm going to get hit by a car. They're bringing up and down their, their car. They're blocking the street. Uh, neighbors that don't um, fire hazards, uh, neighbors don't cut their grasses, it's still dry. It's getting out of hand. Uh, I took pictures of that. I've been up here photo course, photo enforcement uh, three times in, in the last two years. And I never get a feedback or a call back. And um, so just bringing up my street, it just, it's, it's going apart. And there's one that, okay, I knew somebody went over there, probably uh, checked it out probably two weeks ago. Well, they got the word out that they're not doing it anymore with the trailers. But then you got another person with trailers bringing out uh, chairs, uh, tables, uh, jump houses, as, using their garage as a warehouse. We're concerned about, someone down the line is going to have an accident with these, these trailers. And uh, they're all renters. They're not, they're not uh, people like, I think about maybe four of them are, uh, in my block are probably just uh, homeowners. And I brought this up, you know, this year again, because now my mom on disability, I'm home, and I could just hear the, the diesel uh, film from that dolly he has. And I'm just getting tired of it. You know, and, and I'd go around the other blocks from uh, uh, down there, and I would look at, okay, you know, city wants to make revenue, and you know, hey, there's a thing that, there's cars there, parked there. You could tell by the, all the weeds and all that be, growing underneath it. Maybe you have to tell them, uh, leave them notices and tell them, hey, you can't have cars down there, because this, this curb is city. So you know, if we need to make up revenue and have more cops, I, I'm, I'm all for it. You know, and tagging people with dirty yards and stuff like that. Because I don't want my, my uh, back there streets coming apart like, you know, the other places, and you know, then get it, it has to take ten years to rebuild it back up. You know, we got to do something now than later.
Can you do me a favor? Isaac, you want to uh, address this issue a little bit on, on code enforcement? What, what is address and the area we can uh, look into this matter?
Sure.
Okay, please?
To kind of give you an update, I was going to do it in my department report, but we'll kind of go through it now. I have looked at code enforcement as far as the ordinance and start, and then also our staffing and our structure. We have done some things to kind of bulk it up. Um, as far as getting more into our code enforcement system itself, uh, we just got it updated this week, and it's live. So it's giving us a lot more tracking, and we're getting the tools that we need. So we are moving forward with that process. I've also reached out to our city attorney, Bianca, so that we can start opening that dialogue as far as what our ordinance is saying and their structure. So we are working on that currently. But yes, I will reach out, back out and keep in touch with this individual. And also come back to council as well, to some of the things that we've talked about and how we're going to move forward.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for... Okay. Anybody else can come forward, please? Appreciate your name and...
My name is Yolanda Cantu, and I was born and raised in Salma. But these homeless are getting ridiculous around here. We need something done. It's just like, where I live, they brought in a big old motorhome, sat it in an empty lot. That my uncle used to live there. The Perez's, I don't know if you know, Steve Perez, where they used to live on...
On the corner right there on uh, on Mitchell?
No, it's Nebraska. Nebraska dead ends with uh, freeway.
Oh, yes, okay.
So, and they have a lot of, they have a lot of junk, but they moved the people out, but they left all their junk there.
Okay. Can you do me a favor?
I know they're working on it, but...
Yeah, I, I, I know. There's a process when it comes to property.
Somebody else that had put a tent up, they moved, they moved them, but I noticed that they're on Fourth Street now. But around the corner.
Okay.
It's getting bad in Salma. And I wonder, I mean, I don't see this in Fowler. I don't see it in Kingsburg. What are they doing that we, we, you know?
That's true. You're right. You're, you're making, you're making a good point, Nate.
Do they, do they not let them and just come to move on? And they're coming over here? I, I don't know.
I think, uh, we're, like Isaac said, we're addressing some issues with the uh, uh, the city ordinance, with the attorney and everything to uh, to smooth the process quicker. You know, there's a, under the law, we have some criterias, you know? Property owners. And um, and I'm, trust me, we, we are, Isaac and the attorney are, 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 are working toward it to improve it. And it takes time, but trust me, it'll get done. It'll come back to council. Trust me. And I thank you for coming. We need to know things like this. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Are home-based businesses permitted in Salma?
Sure.
And what do they have to do to have a home-based business?
Yeah, they got to, they got to go through a permitting process and also get a business license.
Yes. State your name and your address, please.
Uh, hi. Good evening, City Council, Mayor Jimbovalos. Uh, my name's Selena Martinez. I was born and raised in Salma, California. I currently live in San Mateo County. I reached out to the City Council back in uh, March about potential project with the city to get impact investing here in Salma. Because as you know, as listening to the civil engineer, there are a lot of projects that need to be done. And I would love to help uh, build a partnership with the City Council if possible. I don't feel like, I, I met with City Council Robertson, and I met with the former city manager. I would really, would really like to move forward with um, the help that I can get from San Francisco to help the city with its projects that the civil engineer brought up. And just as well address some of the social issues that have been going on here. One of the residents have mentioned the homelessness. I don't think the answer is law enforcement or to move them out. They are human beings, just as well as undocumented immigrants that struggle here as well. And I think there needs, we need to build a resilient Salma community. For a greater vision, we need to focus on sustainability, both on social justice issues and environmental issues. Or the city of Salma is, I feel, gonna not go in the right direction. I left almost twenty years ago, and I can say that there has not been a lot of growth in the city. There has been positive growth. There is good things coming, but I feel like it needs to move further to keep up with the future. And, you know, we need to address, as she said, homelessness. My parents struggle financially. I'm sure a lot of people do in this town. I feel there's a lot of vulnerable commu-, um, citizens here, and I feel that they need that help. And um, we just need to build a resilient uh, Salma for the future, or it's going to go into the wrong direction. And I'm, came here to help and build partnerships and engage with citizens. And I've, have been reaching out, and I've had, got a lot of uh, support from citizens already. And so I hear I'm going to uh, have some finances if the city is willing to take advantage of it. So let's talk. I have my card. And if anybody from the um, here, sitting here wants to reach out, I have my business card. I'm more than happy to help. I'm going to turn this into my thesis project for my master's program in public administration. So I hope to hear from you guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Uh, before you leave, can you give your business card to Isaac?
Uh, sure. Hi, Isaac.
Please, and, and um, okay?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Anybody else? Okay. State your name and your address, please.
Lori Perez. I live at twenty, twenty-three thirty-five Park Street. So good evening, Mayor, and Councilman and Councilwoman. I'm not complaining today. I did have a complaint a while back, and I called a friend, Mrs. Robinson, and I told her my complaint. My complaint was that on the alley between Nebraska and Knoll Street and Gaynor, people were just dumping trash. Stalls, refrigerator, you, you name it, it was there. It was looking really terrible. So I called her, and she took care of it. She called her husband. And the next day, I drove by, it was gone. So I just want to thank you for taking care of that problem.
I'd love to take credit for that, Lori, but it was public works.
Was it public works?
Right, right away. They uh, they, you're looking at the gentleman right there.
Well, thank you.
Great job. They're very responsive and definitely don't...
There's another area, but I'll let you know about that later. I drive around, I say, oh, there's garbage there, shouldn't be there. But you know, I don't know why, once a year, it's free, why these people don't go and take it to the dump. I think it needs a flyer in Spanish, and I'm willing to walk the vario and give it to them when it's time to go dump trash for free. You know? Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Okay. Anybody else can come forward and just, and give us, state your name and address, please?
Hi, I'm Rosemary Allen East. In the last City Council meeting, I asked if there was an ordinance regarding big rigs and trailers in residential areas, and I'm still waiting for an update. I don't know if Isaac was going to talk about it when it was, when they went around and talked about program updates.
Okay. It'll be in my department report.
Okay. Your honor, thank you. Anybody else can come forward in this, Jesse, City Council? If not, oh, state your name and address, please.
My name is Robert Cortez. I would like to uh, thank the people who are in the audience for coming up and participating in government. They, 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 sometimes they get their point across, and you, as a City Council people, listen. And third, uh, when they do listen, something is done through the police department, and especially for the people who are out there at night, running around, doing their bad things. I call them little rascals. See? That's really what they are. But uh, I, I, I would like to put thumbs up for all of you as a whole, because uh, without this, uh, something is not done in the city of Salma. And something is, in some ways, when you're out there, you're looking around, you see things being done. See? Like the Salma Police Department uh, doing their duty and getting out there. Before, many years ago, uh, I would be out there at night, and I wasn't doing anything, believe me. I just happened to be going home. But I would see uh, uh, when you see somebody walking around with the table in the middle of the street at about one o'clock in the morning, maybe two o'clock in the morning, and you see the Salma Police Department going by and just hitting them with the lights and just taking off. Now today, I think they stopped to see, hey, what are you doing with that table on your head, huh? So, you know... So, you know, something is being done, uh, it takes time, I know, and, and, and you're chipping away at the problem uh, out there of, uh, these rascals being out there, but continue the good work. And if we all work together, I think something can be done, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Robert, thank you. Okay, anybody else, if not, we'll move to the next item. Okay, consent calendar, all items, under, all items under consent cali-, or category under routine. The complete consent counter will be exact by one motion of roll call. All purpose discussion would, any council may have any item removed from the consent counter and be a part of the regular agenda. Uh, the city council can approve the rest of the remaining, uh, consent counter, anybody wants anything removed from the...
Yeah, I'd like one A poll.
One A poll?
Please.
One E, please.
One E? Okay, anything else? Okay, you need approval for the rest, we need a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please?
Councilmember Durk.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Robertson.
Aye.
Councilmember Franco.
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya.
Aye.
Mayor Abala.
Aye, okay, uh, Mi- Mike?
We have the guys from, uh, Chriscom here tonight. Could we just have them get up and just say a word of greeting and tell us a little what's going on? Stay within your three minutes and we'll be happy.
He can take a little longer, don't worry.
Chuck Gialloin, I, I, uh, I think I can do it within three minutes because we were here about three months ago, uh, doing all of this. So, um, our contract is up for the next year, we're hopeful that, uh, we will get it renewed this evening. We had a lot of, uh, changes under the last city managers, you know, um, Henry's no longer here, Mr. Perea. And so, um, our focus, when we talk about infrastructure, there is an awful lot on our plate right now to work with Sacramento and in Washington DC on those types of items. Um, I'll run over a few things we've been asked to jump into. Um, we've got the, uh, Danuba Sewer Main, Amberwood Sewer, Salma Grove Project, East Nebraska Avenue McCall, Avenue Line Replacement, Nebraska, again, um, Avenue to Mitchell. The, um, the important part for the council to know this evening, I think, is, um, we're gonna have a new governor coming in pretty soon in the next six months, um, we've been working on the federal side. I wanna thank the mayor for his valuable time a couple of weeks ago and, and Isaac for coming out and talking to our representative from Senator Harris's office. There's an awful lot that we need to, uh, make sure that we, you know, get on the table. Um, a month, a couple of months ago, uh, council member, uh, I'll tell you, Louis, Councilmember Franco was, um, all over Valadeo's office, Mr. Valadeo's office in Congress, um, showing him, his staff, what needed to be done and what we need here in town, uh, as it relates to infrastructure improvements, because you hear how many things actually, um, need to be pursued. The, uh, last year, we were asked to, uh, help again with, uh, a PD issue and funding for the fire department. I think it was a little overwhelming for Sacramento, um, so what we did was we, uh, got with, uh, Mr. Arambula and tried to support one of his bills that would be helpful to our town. Um, it's on hiatus right now, but it's going to start up again, the session ends, uh, in December. So, um, we'll see what happens between now and then with that piece of legislation. So, um, I'm happy to answer questions, I think, uh, again, we were here a couple of months ago, really giving a pretty thorough background on everything that we've been doing. Uh, one other thing we've been asked to do is, um, you have another firm, of course, that's on board and, uh, they're supposed to be doing grant writing for the city and we're supposed to back end that and fill it. So, um, we have not yet been asked to do, uh, to pursue any of those grants. The things that the Chriscom company has been looking for are more, I don't wanna say earmark, but that's what they are. They're from the legislature, from the governor's office, uh, or some kind of program through the federal government. So, um, as the other firm gets ready and applies for those, uh, those grants, uh, then Chriscom is supposed to be there and try to backfill that and see what we can bring back to the table.
Am I hearing you haven't had any contact with Townsend, they haven't reached out?
We have not made any contact with that firm.
Who's supposed to make the first step there, who's supposed to make the first...
I would initiate it, yeah, we're currently, we're currently going after another grant right now where we may need some of his services. So at this point, we haven't yet, we've gone over some, some of the grants, but we haven't been successful. Um, but we will be getting them in the mix for this, for this grant currently.
Chuck, if I'm not mistaken, I was speaking with Jason several weeks ago?
Mm-hmm.
And he told me that, that Chriscom requested a meeting with Townsend through Mr. Perea and that it was supposed to be set up. That never happened?
Correct.
Was it, can you elaborate on that or he just never got the call?
Well, we, well, okay, I'm not gonna call any, eh, any firm by a name right now, but we reached out ourselves, uh, after you folks hired them. Uh, they were supposed to do grant writing, they're also a registered lobbyist for you, you should know that. So there's two firms that are working for you right now, or supposed to be. So they are registered advocates in Sacramento, um, and then when we didn't get, uh, a, a call back, Mr. Perea, uh, told us he would parlay that meeting between our firms, we have not done that yet. Uh, I will say that, um, the, uh, that, you know, this gentleman was up here talking about the CDPG grant. So, perhaps you can assign us to help him get, get that, um, that's what we're supposed to do. So, to answer your question, councilmember, yeah, we've, we've had contact.
I thought there was a meeting supposed to happen this summer.
Correct.
When I, when I spoke with Jason.
Has not, has not, well, you know, like I said, we've been up here, uh, probably three times in the last year defending our contract and I, I don't think anybody else has been up here recently.
I believe Townsend's been with us since March and we had asked at, I know I had specifically asked that after ninety days that they come and do what you are currently doing for us, give us an update on the projects, but I have yet to see that. If we could reach out to them, Isaac, that would be awesome.
They're already scheduled first to February fourth.
Can I, I, I just wanna mention, I'm sorry, my voice is hoarse, I've been talking too much, that's at least what Renee always tells me. Um, so, back to, no, three minutes, one more minute, um, I, I just wanna mention that our efforts are not slowing down at all with what we're responsible to do. Um, we're looking under every rock, uh, like I said, councilmember Franco, the mayor, uh, you guys have been in those meetings with us where we've been asking the federal offices and the state offices to look at USDA, everything that's out there. Um, when you add up the numbers that we're responsible for pursuing, it's, it's a very healthy eight figures. I mean, it's a lot of money out there and these are long-term projects that our community needs. And, um, we, we have to pick a way at them and I think we've been very successful getting them on the radar of, of Congressman Valadeo's office, Senator Harris's office, Senator Feinstein's office, Sacramento. Um, Sacramento's a little different animal, um, than, than the federal side. A lot of this infrastructure is going to be on the federal side that we have to look for, some of it can be up in Sacramento. We have to be very careful, keep our eye on the ball with the new governor. Um, when that, uh, person comes in, there's going to be a lot of changes, um, there's going to be some turnover. Uh, we've stayed very, very close to leadership, the Speaker of the Assembly, Randon, and also Tony Atkins, the President of the State Senate. Um, we're up there all the time, they know who we are, they know what we're looking for. And, uh, and, and I wanna, again, give a little shout out to, uh, Assemblymember Arambula. He, uh, again, decided to carry legislation this year, and as the chief knows, um, to, to help out some smaller communities. And unfortunately, that stalled, we were at the hearing, uh, I think we were the only ones to appear at that hearing. But they know that we're very willing to help to get everything, you know, back on track. So, what's before you tonight, it's no new money, uh, no additional, we're not asking for a raise. We are very cautious about our expenses, uh, as we promised you folks in the past. Um, additionally, uh, Mr. Perea pulled us off of some of the economic development, uh, things that we were asked to look into. We were working with the boot barn, we're delighted, we've spent money at the boot barn locally, uh, didn't wear them today, though. Sorry about that, my feet are kinda tired. Um, but when we saw the, uh, Mayor Pro Tem and the, and the mayor up at, uh, the shopping center convention, I think that was very important for you to be there and I think we offered, uh, some assistance. We talked to Isaac about, you know, could we help you out, can we show you around, can we introduce you to some people? But again, that's really not in our purview, but our pledge to the council is that as we talk to developers and work with them, we will continue to push that along to the appropriate people, so...
Because the citizens, Chuck, they ask us, what, you know, they ask me, what, what have you gotten out of this money? And I know when you first started, you hit a huge home run and you helped to get this, with the representative of Arambula's office, four million dollars for the police appropriation, but since that time, I don't think we've had anything we can really take a look at. So, you know, base hits are good too, you know, home runs are good, but base hits are good too, and that's why we keep asking you back and asking Townsend back too, because we gotta justify that expenditure here. I know you're, you're sowing the seeds, we're talking about things where you can be really effective as a, as a lobbyist, uh, but we also have to justify that expense to our constituents as well.
Well, let me, let me just defend the expense to the constituents. Uh, you know, you've paid us, eh, eh, if, if I could pay you a dollar and get about thirty-five dollars back, it's a pretty good return on investment, so we care about that very much and that's what's happened here. And, uh, I also think that the new city manager is going to come on board and we have to be very respectful of where that person is going to take this ship, right? I mean, we've gone through a few city managers and so, um, we have ideas on how we need to get where we wanted to go and I'll give you an example, um, we asked for an awful lot of money for fire, an awful lot of money from Sacramento for fire, and I think it scared everybody away. And so, that may have hurt another project that we were trying to work on. So, I gotta tell you, there's a difference between the Chriscom company with our boots on the ground every day, working, being up here, driving, being part of the Chamber of Commerce, um, being part of this community and sitting there writing grant money, or, or writing grants. And they're almost getting paid what we're getting paid to do that. So, I wanna say we're on the front line of what the city is, is going after. And so I wanna assure the public that we will stay on the front line and continue to work very hard. We'd actually like a two-year contract, um, we have a three, a three-year contract and, you know, to follow a two-year session, which is important, when Isaac said that's probably not what he's going to recommend. Um, I understand that, we have a new, uh, a new city manager coming in that's going to have to make a decision about us too. So, we will continue to keep our head down and try to keep these things moving. But I think not only have we paid for ourselves, we've done that fifteen or twenty times over and I think that was an awful lot of work and I don't think we slowed down one iota on what we've been doing. So, I just wanna make sure that the council understands how we feel on our end.
Absolutely, I really appreciate the work that you've done on behalf of the city of Salma and its citizens. Uh, we're one step further than we were before we met and had a relationship with the Chriscom company. You've already proven yourself, you have a track record, um, I constantly see you folks here in Salma and you're actively engaged and involved, and so I cannot tell you how much that means. You're only a phone call away, anytime I've called, I know that you've returned the call literally within minutes and that says an awful lot.
Thank you, we don't take our job for granted, we feel very privileged to be hired by the, by Salma and we wanna continue on if you'd like to have us, so...
And the other communities you have in the valley are Corcoran and Lemoore?
We represent Avonel, we represent Corcoran and Lemoore, um, we do different things for them and, uh, we do a lot of their economic development, we do. And so, out here in, in, in Salma, um, we're getting very heavy, more on the federal side. Really, uh, what Mr. Perea wanted us to focus on was lobbying. So when there's legislation that, you know, Isaac needs to sign or something in Sacramento or something in Washington DC, we're, we have to jump on that. We had a issue today that we had to talk about that we can get on tomorrow, so that's, that's what we do.
I think we definitely wanna know when Chriscom gets a hit, when they, when they get something for the city, I, I'd like to know. If they lock for something, get that through, thank you.
I, I can keep you informed.
And, uh, and thank you for, uh...
Hold on, Jim, I have one, I have a Salma question.
Go ahead.
Chuck, on my research and my short time being on council and looking at your organization, it seems very unique compared to other organizations, or, I know you do economic development, you do the lobbying, but I just don't know if, is there any suggestions that you can give us to better utilize your service for the, our community?
Um, well, uh, that's a very good question, we, um, you know, we do those things and I think it just, you're the policymakers and you have to decide if it's better to split some of this work up or, you know, have someone try to, you know, get their arms around everything. In our business, there's a lot of continuity because when we're applying for a grant, um, we understand where it's gonna go, uh, how we need to go and pursue that, same with lobbying. Um, economic development is a very different issue, um, we don't have a lot of land in Salma, as all of you know, that we, that we own. And yet, we have that ninety-nine freeway, so there are some very good opportunities out there. And, um, and again, one of the things, Councilman, I, I'm very happy to, to say is that we're always thinking, when we have our staff meetings every Monday, we're always thinking about who can we push out this way so you folks can meet. Now, having said that, we, we have to respect the opinion of the city manager who pulled us off of that part of it. So he gave us a lot more to do on, on the lobbying side, however. And so, you know, um, if you, if the city ever gets into a situation with, um, grant writing or economic development, we're very, very happy to help and that's, you know, sit down and talk with staff about it, so we're very happy to do that. And Mr. Robertson, Mayor Pro Tem, uh, very happy to let you know what we're up to and, uh, when we get a victory and also let you know, uh, when we work really hard and don't get something, right? I mean, you know, um, we're, we're on the playing field in Sacramento and in Washington, which is a very good thing. Um, we got thrown into the fire and we worked very hard and, um, my firm always feels like we're in the fire. We always have to keep reinventing ourselves and keep moving forward and I'm pretty tough with that stuff. And, um, again, when I've called you guys, um, you're there and you're there to help, appreciate it very much, so...
Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you very much, Chuck, thank you, for your input and your information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck, we're coming down.
Okay, uh...
Quick question, just math, why is it fifty-four-six instead of fifty-four thousand when it's forty-five hundred a month?
They have an option for a fifty-dollar allowance for expenditures for travel.
Do they get it even if they don't use it?
No, it's just, just, it's there so that you, we have a cap for the whole agreement itself.
So you built it in the contract?
So you take the forty-five plus the fifty, you add all those amounts together and that's what you come up with?
Cause I just didn't see it in the contract, I saw the travel part, did you put a number to it?
Yeah, I had to put a whole dollar to it as far as a close cap with also some verbiage, just in case he has some extra, uh, travel expenditures.
There's more travel?
On approv-, on approval of the city manager, yes, I could.
Okay, move forward to the next item, we gotta make a motion?
Well, hold on, so this is just renewal of the existing contract, correct?
Correct, that a one-year term.
A one-year term, so if we decide to, say, do two years, we lock in this price for two years? And we could still have the op-out clause at any time?
That's correct, um, but I would give the new city manager a time to do an assessment and evaluation, um, when, when that individual does come on.
But what's the difference if there's an op-out, whether it's one year or two year? You get more time to assess because our next item is, on one of our future items is yearly fee increases. So that can work another way, you know, it's like locking in a low-term rate, so...
That's a very valid point.
You know, if we can lock in this rate for a longer amount of time and still have the op-out clause of thirty days, what's the difference if it's one or two years?
If I could interject, Councilman, we have an election coming up, the city council could change complexion and there may be a different take on contracts in the future and I would be loathe to. and I would be loathe to. And unwilling to commit the council to more than a year contract at this point, when there might be a fresh set of eyes or different sets of eyes looking at the contract. I just think it would be a consideration for that.
I think.
Well, in the meantime, we are sitting. We have been elected. This is what it is. It's in front of us now. It's not in front of us in November. It's in front of us now. And so, we have that option. And I would be perfectly happy or inclined to opt for a two-year contract. Chris Com has a proven track record, unlike the other firm. And so, I'd be perfectly happy to opt for a two-year contract with Chris Com.
Would they be happy to?
I think he mentioned that.
They requested initially a two-year.
Yeah.
It's agendaized as a one-year?
A one-year. Yeah, I brought it down to a one-year.
So, it would have to be brought back?
Within a year.
Can we make a motion with the?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, because it's on the agenda, the council can change any of the terms of the agreement at the dais.
To a two-year?
To a two-year. That sounds awesome, the council.
It is. Falls in line with their.
Their plan?
Their.
Because you really can't get.
Sacramento.
So, we started out as a month-a-month.
It is a month-a-month.
Then we went to a year. So, the opt-out on this is, what, thirty days?
Yeah.
To.
That's correct.
Get out of it. One way or the other. Either party can say, we're getting out of this.
That's correct.
With thirty days' notice.
Right. But we just lock in this rate, so if not.
Or nothing happens in the next year, and the contract value goes down, and the city council can negotiate a lower contract of, say, four thousand a month or thirty-five-hundred. Have you considered that option? So, you're tying the council hands. You're automatically assuming that things are going to get better and that there are going to be more projects. And I fully hope that, and I'm optimistic for the best for that. But I have to be a realist with taxpayer money. So, I would be.
I agree with your comments, Scott, but if I'm looking for the positive, you seem to be looking for the negative, so.
No, no. I'm counterbalancing what you're saying. You're giving me one side of a coin, and I'm giving you the other. It could go up. They could get more projects. It could go down. They could get fewer projects. And then, you've tied the council hands.
No, I didn't. Because they can just, they can just end the contract in thirty days. Nobody's hand is tied.
And then, you renegotiate if that's the way the council decides to go.
You create a liability when you do a two-year contract instead of a one-year. You go further out. Then why not do a ten-year?
Okay. Let's do it. You make a motion for ten years?
I think either one is, I think either one is not good for the city. You should go one year or month-a-month. Since it's thirty days anyway, why don't we just go month-a-month? Just a thirty-day contract anyway.
It shows commitment on our side.
It sounds like we're all in agreement as far as renewing the contract. The only question here is the term is first, how many years? So, is there a motion?
We don't have a motion on the table.
We don't have a motion on the table.
I move to approve or amend the current contract to two years.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Montoya?
Aye.
Councilmember Franco?
Aye.
Councilmember Durk?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Robertson?
No.
Mayor Avalon?
That's a good, that's a good toss-up. You know what? We can opt-off anytime or renegotiate anything. Go ahead. We'll go. We'll go with it. Yes.
Thank you.
Move forward. Okay. All right. Next item, E.
Check register.
Check register.
Okay. Page thirty-five. Okay. Item seven-one-one-nine-nine, PG&E engineering advance for PD, twenty-three thousand, five sixty-nine. Is that measure P?
There's actually two invoices there, so. So, you have an engineer's advance for the PD, that's one invoice. The utilities for the city itself is one invoice. So, that's why it seems so large.
I was going to say, that's a lot of money.
Okay, so it's combined with.
Yeah, it's combined.
Okay. Even, evenly split?
No. The utilities for the city itself are a large bulk of it. So, usually for engineering advances of some type, it's only like a thousand dollars.
Okay. Then one down from that, seven-one-two-zero-zero, physio control, life pack maintenance, sixty-three-nineteen. Is that just a maintenance agreement?
I believe it is. Yes, it is. It's for fire equipment.
Fire equipment. Then, next page, thirty-six, seven-one-two-four-six, Collins and Shetler Planning, ninety-six-sixty. Is that for the new planner?
That's correct.
And is the new planner making ninety-six-sixty a month, or was that a retainer, or what is that?
That's pretty close to what they'd be getting. We had them bulk up for their first term so that we can get some of that knowledge dumped out of Brian into the new individual and kind of get us wrapped up a little bit. So, that's why you see a large amount. So, we'll start to tear that down over time and how we structure that planning department.
Okay. And then, seventy-one-two-six-two, third from the bottom, Five Cities Economic Commission, first quarter dues. When's the next meeting for Five Cities?
I just went.
Did you just go?
Last week.
Okay. And so.
It's at a quarterly basis.
Who's our city representative?
Jim.
Jim.
I am.
Where was that held?
Dollar.
Okay. Just checking. And then, next page, sorry, just checking these items out. Seventy-one-two-nine-three, Precision Civil Engineering, the new fire construction managing. Is that the project manager, or is that the civil engineer for the new, for the fire?
He's a construction manager for the remodel of the fire station.
So, Precision Civil Engineering is the project manager for the fire?
Correct. Similar to the banner that we have for the police station.
Okay, got it. And then, finally, if you go, turn it around a little bit, landscape, page thirty-eight, Cal Card halfway down, there's no number. Six-twenty-one-eighteen, Bob Barker Company, some of them are just too good to leave alone.
Really?
Disposable jumpsuits and undies for three-twenty-one. What is that?
What individual is it? On the left-hand side?
Debbie Gomez.
Oh, Gomez, okay.
Do we know what that is?
Sometimes you don't want to read.
I can tell you, there are the jumpsuits that are crime scene investigators, where they're processing a crime scene, that they have to dispose of afterwards in case it's contaminated in any way.
Okay.
Saw the jumpsuits and undies there, and.
No, it's a good question.
Ask for a question. Thank you very much for the explanation. See with that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Are you done?
Yep.
Okay. While we're on Cal Cards, I took, I went through and I counted how many Cal Cards were used during this period from June twenty-third through July twenty-third. And it looks as though there were well over two dozen different Cal Cards. And I'm not concerned about the expenses, the charges that were made during that timeframe. I am concerned about the number of cards that we have out in our city. I know that there are other cities that have less than half a dozen. And then, we have twenty-something cards. I guess what I'm asking is, is that standard, do you feel? Is that necessary to have so many cards out? Because, you know, it is, if there's a charge made on there, and that's troublesome for the employee, even if it was made by accident or error. And so, do we want to have that many Cal Cards out and available?
When I first started to actually analyze this, as far as who has what and what they're doing with those cards, and kind of whittled it down to what we currently have. So, only essential staff that are actually doing purchasing would actually have a card. For example, Rec itself has one card just for the department itself. And then, Kirshner obviously has his own. So, essential staff are the individuals that are doing the purchasing that needs to be done. For example, fire station, each fire station will have its own card so that they can do what they need to do as far as the day-to-day. So, I've assessed that and feel comfortable with the number that we're at. So, there's no part-timers in there that have cards. It's just full-time, full-employees that they can do it.
And they're fully aware of.
They sent off on the credit card policy when they received it, and they also, we adjusted it up date recently, and they had to sign as well.
Just making sure, I just, for me personally, I feel that that's an awful lot of Cal Cards out. And the potential for liability is out there. Just want to make sure we're good on that.
Yeah. I did a full assessment, and I felt comfortable.
Do you see all the bills that come in for the Cal Card? Do you see all the bills?
I sign off on every Cal Card statement and review all receipts.
So, would that make a motion to approve item E?
Okay. Make a, made a motion. I'll need a second. Oh, roll call.
Mayor Pro Tem Robertson?
Aye.
Councilmember Franco?
Aye.
Councilmember Durk?
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya?
Aye.
Mayor Avalon?
Aye. Okay. So, be it. Now, we'll move on to the public hearing. Okay. Consider resolution amending the scheduling fees and charges for the City of Services. Isaac?
Thank you, Mayor. What you have in front of you is your annual resolution for us updating our fees. The only increase that should be seen in here is due to our furly burn rates being increased, and that's due to our bargaining units getting increases. So, that's, there's no new raise, our new fees at all. We're strictly moving things forward and increasing the rates due to that. Is there any questions?
Has there been any major changes to the fees? When I went through, it looked like most of them were between two and three percent.
I did a major revaluation of all the fees. Again, the schedules themselves are built of.
Any huge changes?
Not major changes as far as a little bit of descriptions to get a little more tighter on what we're doing, to get a better feel for what people need to be charging internal staff and how do they identify what needs to be done. So, that got cleaned up. Also, the furly burn rate, you have individuals that are touching this as far as to make sure we're capturing all that. In addition to that, also reducing some of the fees, because you have staff members that are not touching it, but yet it was still there, because at one time you had this procedure, but now you have a more cleaner transition throughout the departments to get that done.
In terms of the construction fees and turnaround times and that kind of thing, so, did you consult with the planner, who was still here at that time, the new planner, engineering?
We sit down with all department heads and kind of go through the same exercise every single year. Has something changed? Has, because procedures will change due to laws changing. So, we do a full assessment with each department head.
What do they say about our construction fees? That they're competitive? That they're competitive with other cities? That they're too high, they're too low?
That is some of the exercises we go to as far as where are we at? Are we within the ballpark? The one thing that I will be looking to analyze in a full, back in two thousand and five, we did a full user fee analysis. We brought an outside entity in to redo that. They go through the whole exercise of interviewing and going through the building department, the planning department, everything, and fully assess where we're at. And again, taking into the economic factors of what their surrounding cities and things of that nature to get a little more tightened up. I actually just revisited that conversation with that individual and got a cost analysis of what that'll take. And it'll take us about twenty-five thousand dollars just to do that study again. But since it's two thousand and five, I'd like to get it done.
What's the rule of thumb on that? How often that user fee assessment should be done?
Well, as long as you keep within the fee itself as far as the structure, again, it's built on staff time.
You're building off those base rates, and you're incorporating the increase in costs as a result, in this case, from increases in contracts.
Exactly.
With city employees. But you're saying that the base rates are still more or less valid that you're building off of. But, so in that case, what would a, what would a reallocation and a restudy of user fees get for the city? Why would that be beneficial? Why would it be worth twenty-five thousand or not worth twenty-five thousand?
The reality as far as beneficial is if you do a reassessment from an outside entity, if you do get challenged, you have supporting document and report saying, hey, here's where it's at. Here's the information on how it's done. This individual actually supports what's happening. So, if you do get challenged, one, you can support what's going on. Two, you actually have some kind of information on how that structure was built. Because the fee was, the structure was done back in two thousand and five. The financial部门 had some terms like other departments and restructuring and things of that nature. There's nobody here that has actually can confirm what was transpiring, how they built it. So, I had to restructure it on my own. So, getting that reassessed is kind of vital at some point.
So, Isaac, I have a question. When we, if we decide to hire an outside entity to take a look at our fee structure, is one of the things that they look at, other cities in the surrounding area to make sure that we are within?
Again, that could be part of their analysis. And one of the focuses that I really would be looking at is our building and planning department fee structures. That's where I really think we need to reassess.
I think that's where we put our money where our mouth is. Because that's where we get most of our fees.
Because we could be having money go out the door.
See, because right now, it seems like the only metric you're using in order to do this is using the MOUs. And so, this way, if you hire a firm, they can look at additional metrics in order to come up with a better base figure.
They'll still use that as their base, but to do a more in-depth analysis of how these fees are supposed to be structured.
Aside from just the MOU.
Correct. So, for example, there's a finance fee. It's pretty straightforward, right? This individual touches, this individual touches it, this is what you charge. When you get into your building and planning, it's not that straightforward. There's a lot more work that goes into some of those processes. Outside entities getting involved, you have to take all that and factor it in. So, we've had individuals that, you know, like Brian, you know, he used to do code enforcement, kind of worked into the planning department. Now, we have a full-time planner, but that planner is not structured to be able to set up our user fees. We need to have a full consultant come in and do a study to do that, because they actually sit down with every individual.
They're actually doing the billing fees, but they're not coming up with them and the components. They're not creating.
No. They're not creating. They're structuring it to, through analysis and coming up with that dollar, so.
Isn't this the second modification of the original program?
We do it every year.
Every year. Assessment every year.
No, but I mean, as far as an overall tearing the thing down to the bit?
Yeah, I've done it, I've done it myself individually and kind of restructured and cleaned up the verbiage. But this would be a full in-depth analysis with a supporting document behind it. I mean, we do have supporting document, don't get me wrong. We do have that structure. It's just, sometimes you just need to kind of reslate.
But it's thirteen, thirteen-years-old base rate, so this might update them a little bit.
Yeah. Again, really what you're trying to do is make sure we're capturing every dollar that we can to make sure these fees are current. And again, supportable, arguable.
And so, we have, you know, a major home subdivision coming in. We have another monster home subdivision coming in. After that, we have a commercial development coming in. I think it would benefit the city to make sure that the rates are fair, they're not too high, and they're not too low. And that's twenty-five thousand dollars. I mean, that's a lot of money, but I think it'll be recouped, and it should be accurate, and it'll save us a lot in legal fees, if I'm correct.
And it's a similar exercise we'll be doing when we start doing the general plan update, and that rolls into development impact fees being updated. These all kind of play hand in hand with each other.
Yeah. Yeah, you're right, Isaac. We have to be fair with the developers and the city as well, you know.
Correct.
Getting our structure money back. Anybody else?
That's the public hearing.
Public hearing? Anyone in the public can make a public comment, can come forward on this particular item, on the user fees for the City of Selma? Okay. Refer back to council. Council?
Move for approval on this item.
One second.
All right.
All right. Roll call, please, Reyna.
Councilmember Derek.
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya.
Aye.
Councilmember Franco.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Robertson.
Aye.
Mayor Avalon.
Aye. Okay. Next item. Okay, consider unemployment agreement with, uh, Tesla Galvin for, uh, city manager services. Isaac? Oh, no, actually attorney, I'm sorry.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as set forth in the staff report, over the last several months, the council has engaged in the recruitment of a city manager. Uh, after the last closed session, the city council directed my office to negotiate with Ms. Teresa Gallivan. As set forth in the staff report, it is a three-year term at one hundred and seventy thousand dollars per year. There is a CPI annual increase not to exceed five percent. She will also be given twenty-four days of vacation, twelve days of sick leave, a five hundred dollar monthly automobile allowance that's subject to certain, uh, terms and provisions, which I'll go over in a moment. Um, she has ten thousand dollars of deferred compensation and five thousand dollars of relocation reimbursement if she should move into the city of Selma. I, if I may, if I can go over the additional revisions that the council directed, uh, during closed session?
Yes. Cool, continue.
Section one subsection B, we're removing the term, the word "all." Section five subsection A, we're adding a new second sentence, which will read in its entirety as follows. Notwithstanding the foregoing, the city council shall evaluate employee six months prior to the expiration date of this agreement. Subsection eight, we're adding a new second sentence that reads in its entirety as follows. Notwithstanding the foregoing, from time to time, employee may use a city vehicle in the event her personal vehicle is out of service, lost or stolen or otherwise disabled due to events beyond her control, in cases of emergency, or due to road conditions incompatible with her vehicle. Also in subsection nine, as part B, we're adding a new third sentence that reads in its entirety as follows. Notwithstanding the foregoing, as of, and then we're going to put in her start date, employee shall have five days of sick leave available and shall not accrue any additional sick leave for the first five months of employment. Section ten, we're going to add a new second sentence that will read as follows. Said expenses shall include dues and expenses for work-related activities, conferences, and associations that provide benefit to the city. I believe those were all of the additional revisions. If the council has any questions, I'm available.
Uh, thank you. Any question? Okay. Any public comment out there? Make a public comment on this issue? Okay, refer back to council.
Move for approval?
I'll second it.
All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Derek.
Aye.
Councilmember Franco.
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Robertson.
Aye.
Mayor Avalon.
Aye, we have a new city manager. Okay, next. October twenty-second, they might, she'll start for the city of Selma. Okay, next item. Okay, consider appointment of various, uh, city commissions, uh. Okay, this goes to our person over there. Reyna?
Turned it on or off? Mayor, mayor member, members of the city council. The information is in front of you. Also discussed, uh, and presented to you was the two applications that were received in my office this morning. From applicant Glenn Nicewonder for the Personnel Commission and applicant Matthew Rodriguez for the Recreation and Community Services Commission. The information is in front of you for your approval, recommendation, and review. Not in that order.
Okay, refer back to council.
Do we have any of the applicants here?
Advocate, oh, okay, please come forward to the council and, uh, state your name and, and what department you're, you're going for.
Hello, uh, my name is Matthew Rodriguez. I live here in Selma on thirteen thirteen Sarah Street. Uh, I don't necessarily know what kind of, what, if there was a direct question or anything that anybody would like me to address, but I'm applying for the Recreation and Community Services Commission. Uh, for the sheer fact that I've been working in the, uh, recreation field for the past four years. And, uh, I believe that is my area that I can, uh, give, well, that I can give some sort of help to the city and whatever, uh, we may need here in Selma. Is there any specific questions, though?
You, you know it's a high-paying job, you know?
Uh, yeah. I, I hear that.
Okay. No, and, and these, uh, commissions are all volunteer, okay?
Yeah.
And, um, I, one thing I thank you for coming up here and, and being, and trying to be a part of our community and our commission. Thank you.
Yes.
And Matt, what have you done for the YMCA?
Um, I've worked for YMCA Camp Scott Lake for the past four years. Um, I also serve on the YMCA committee in Reedley. Uh, what we do there is help, uh, uh, get children to, uh, camperships is what we call them. So like scholarships to go to camp. And it's, it's an amazing experience. I don't know if anybody here has ever been there, but most people say, I went there when I was a kid. So it's been, just celebrated a hundred year anniversary in two thousand and fourteen, I believe. And, um, it, it's phenomenal, the, the stories that come out of there. So that's one thing that I do there. And also I represent the US area, uh, in Wiseman, which is a, a service group organization to the YMCA. And what we do is also the same thing. They also hold, uh, this is for Fresno Clovis, since it's the only one that's still existing in the area. Um, there used to be a Wiseman group here in Selma that's kind of similar to Rotary, uh, and, uh, uh, stuff like that. But specifically for YMCA and youth organizations, we hold a football carnival and a, um, football carnival and wrestling carnival for the elementary school students in, uh, the city of Clovis. So that's, those are a couple of things that I do.
Well, I never went to camp as a kid, but I have been to camps for years and years and years as an adult. And they, it also has changed my life, so thank you.
So Matt, why now?
Um, I feel like I'm ready, um, at this point, cause I, I've had an application before filled out for a commissioner, um, position. I just never felt that in, uh, with my level of education that I was ready to do it. But at this point, I feel like I have a few years of experience now. Um, I see what's been happening, one, in city of Clovis and the Recreation Department. And, uh, the kinds of projects that they're working on in terms of their, their commission there. Um, and then I, uh, the stuff that I'm bringing back and learning, I feel like I can apply it here in Selma.
Give me an example, if you don't mind.
So, one big thing that, uh, Clovis is moving on right now, that I, that I'm directly involved in is at the Rotary Skate Park in, uh, in Clovis. They have a thing where they're, they require helmets at this point, but the integration of now requiring elbow pads and knee pads, it's something simple. Um, but it, it's huge in the city because, one, there's going to be fight back from, uh, pushback from anybody that doesn't want to do it. Two, parents are going to be a little, uh, confused, but it's a huge, it's honestly, uh, it might be, seem simple to some people, but it's a huge, um, process to try to enlighten people on what they need to do. Um, also, uh, just programs and, uh, stuff that we do in Clovis, like, there's a huge Easter event that literally almost the whole city comes to and you have to sign up to do. Um, being able to work and, uh, do those programs is something that I've seen firsthand and worked firsthand. And I feel like if I was on a commission, I'd be able to apply those, uh, those kinds of things, or not apply, but be able to maybe get some of those things happening here in Selma.
Do you have any experience working with children with disabilities? And if so, how did you go about including, including them in the regular recreation program?
Yeah, so, uh, I have about a year, about a year, I believe, working with, uh, the, the students with disabilities. Well, not students, uh, just children with disabilities with the magic program in Clovis. Um, they have a, uh, adaptive basketball league at our Clovis Recreation Center. And, uh, I've been referee, um, basically referee, scorekeeping, and kind of just encouraging kids, being a coach to one of the teams, um, stuff like that. And it, it's helped me a lot because my, one of my bosses, he has twenty-plus years of experience working with, uh, children of, with disabilities. And I pick up a lot from him, a lot of different stuff. Also with the magic program, there's a person there who literally started that program that I pick up a lot from. And it's, it's just learning from them and, uh, you know, applying those skills elsewhere. And it's helped me in just everyday life, honestly, with people with disabilities. Um, for example, today, I was at, I was at school at Reedley College and, uh, all the kids in the disabled, uh, disabled students program are in the cafeteria. And, uh, I just kind of know what to do now when anything, an issue arises and, uh, it's, it's good to have those, that kind of knowledge.
And one last question. Um, do you envision yourself on this board as being more of a policy driver, a rubber stamper? Or do you see yourself as being actively involved in the recreation programs being offered through the city?
Uh, I would say actively involved in, uh, the program, the programs being offered to the city, since I, that's most of the experience that I have is directly being involved in a bigger city. So, um, I would say not only, not only trying to, um, you know, push certain policies through, but also seeing them through and, uh, be, even being, you know, the volunteer there. Uh, something that I just recently learned is in a business, you have your managers, your, uh, tech, technicians and your, I, I forget the other one, I honestly forgot. But there's three different parts. And, uh, if you only do one managerial and you're super organized, it's great. But if you're not a technician and putting in the work, it's never going to happen. So, um, kind of just applying all three of those. Uh, and following through with whatever it is on the board that is needed and having, oh, entrepreneur, uh, uh, entrepreneur manager and technician and supporting all those three going through on the board, I feel like I can have an impact, and we can all have an impact.
Perfect. Thank you.
Do you play pickleball?
I just, I need to start, cause I watch it all the time and I know all the rules. I just never played.
You are, you are in a hotbed of pickleball, you know.
Yeah, I, I know how to play, cause I have one in, in, uh, Clovis, but I'm only able to watch. I can never play with them, so I'm super jealous.
Come on down.
All right.
Absolutely.
I, I just wanted to take a moment and, and thank everybody that's applying for these commissions. These committees are really the building block of what our community is about. And it gives the knowledge and it comes up to council so they can make recommendations. Um, so the things that you're doing within these committees are great and I want to just say thank you.
No problem.
I've had a, uh, opportunity to see Matthew in action. Um, he and I were both in South Pacific musical in two thousand and fourteen and, you know, we had bit roles and we had a lot of time to talk. And one of the things he said is, I want to be active in government. I, I want to be involved. I want to make a difference in my community. And I really appreciate seeing you follow up. You know, you went to Reedley, you're the class president there. And now you're going for, uh, more service in the commission. And I know it's, it's only onward and upward from here, so, uh, thank you for volunteering for, for this.
No problem.
No, and like I said, Matt, you're, you're, in your life, you're creating a balance in your life. You're doing everything in balance. I like it, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
You, uh, you're growing inside yourself, confident, you know, within a year. I, I see you now. You're like, my God, this man is good. Step up to the plate. And, um, people like you, uh, in our community, there's a bright future for, I, I look at you and I say, man, I'm in good hands. You know what I mean? I like what I see. Thank you, Matt.
Yeah, no problem.
For being a part of our community and being, living here. Thank you.
No problem. Thank my mom for that. She brought me here.
Well, that's still pretty nice.
Is that, uh, all the questions?
Okay. Anything else, anywhere question, guys?
All right.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have, we have another.
Rota Renovato.
So Ms. Renovato applied for both Recreation Community Services and Pioneer Village. And according to our city clerk indicated no preference. So if there's one for one, if she's applying for Pioneer Village, now there, that leaves one opening for Matt in Recreation Community Services, which is, looks like the only one he applied for. I would think he would go there.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Uh, yeah, I would, yeah, since he had no preference, uh, Rhonda, either way, I would, and then Matt only applied for one. Uh, let's, and I see his background in, uh, recreation as it is. He fits, he fits the criteria.
All the rest are pretty much going to be empty.
Yeah.
Other than.
Then personnel, we have Glenn Nicewonder.
Time out. Yeah, you got.
So we're not done. We're just, I was just mentioning just two commissions, but, okay, so you want to go from the top planning commission?
Yeah, let's go to the top.
Mr. Singh is applying for continuation of his term, right? He's not opting out.
Correct.
So I.
Okay, I, I would, I would, yeah, I'd still back in.
And then number two, Recreation Community Services, uh, Mr. Rodriguez, I would go for him in that.
Yeah.
My preference. Personnel Commission, we haven't talked about that one.
Glenn Nicewonder, I think, applied for Personnel, correct?
Yeah.
Then there's no conflict in being on two commissions, right?
We have other commissioners that are currently serving double roles.
So Mr. Nicewonder for Personnel.
Okay.
Did anyone else apply for Personnel?
No.
No.
Okay.
The incumbent applied again. For, he applied again.
So.
For.
If you move Glenn.
Okay.
Oh, so you're saying move Glenn, are you saying move Glenn off of planning?
No, he thought he'll be on both.
No, he can be on both.
He'll be on both. He can be on both.
He could be on both.
Yeah, he can be on the, yeah. Yeah.
And then Rota would be at Pioneer Village?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I don't see any other open ones.
I think that fills all the vacancies.
Yeah, that, all the vacancies are covered. All right, guys, uh.
Do we take a moment?
You want to take a vote?
And, and just to confirm, the incumbents that are requesting to be ratif-, uh, ratifying the incumbents, is that what council is saying?
Yes.
Yes, the ones that reapply, they're back in.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
And the, what?
I'll make a motion to approve the commission as council has deliberated and decided.
Give me a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call.
Mayor Protem Robertson.
Aye.
Councilmember Franco.
Aye.
Councilmember Derek.
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya.
Aye.
Mayor Avalon.
Thank you. Aye, aye. I'm sorry.
It's Matthew.
Okay. Matt, congratulations. All right, we'll go to the next item.
Thanks, everybody else who volunteered for the commission.
Okay, thank everybody, yeah, everybody volunteered this, this high-paying job. Thank them. Okay, next item, uh, department reports. Okay, let's go with the, uh, well, you know, public works, Dan. I'm going to put you on the spot right now. Anything to say?
Uh, update on public works. I'm happy to say we brought aboard two, uh, full-time temporary employees last week.
All right.
To help our situation out. Uh, street painting, we completed, uh, all the school crossings three days before school started. So cut it close when we got it done. Uh, we're expecting light poles and fixtures for Schaefer Park basketball courts to be delivered this week and we'll get them installed the following week. Um, PG&E finally hooked up service to Lincoln Park Restrooms. Long time coming. And we got our part done, so now we got to put some sidewalks in and that restroom, restroom will be open to the public.
All right.
Good.
And that's about all I have.
You're on track. I like that. Okay. Fire, you're next.
Uh, we had a big event on, uh, Saturday out at our training center. Uh, we partnered with, uh, some other local agencies and the Fresno City College Fire Academy. And held their, uh, they call it their culminating event, uh, for their graduating, uh, recruits of their last class. And, uh, they invite their families out there and, uh, give them an opportunity, the cadets an opportunity to show what they've learned. So we, uh, we had them out there. They ran through, uh, three separate evolutions. And, uh, you know, gave the families an opportunity to see everything that they learned. So they really enjoyed it. We enjoyed having them. It was an honor for us to be able to participate with them, uh, especially since most of us graduated from that fire academy at one point. Uh, you know, over the last twenty years, if you look back to how far back I graduated, so, uh, that's about it.
Okay. Uh, Chief Garter, you're next.
Okay, a couple of, can you hear me? Oh, sorry. This thing is good. Couple of things from the report, it's on page ninety-nine. I want to clarify, one thing, I looked at the wrong stat line in doing the report. Crime actually fell over the last two weeks by five percent. Uh, it's important to note, over the last three months of the summer, which is usually our busiest time, in the city, we've averaged, uh, two point eight crimes a day reported for the entire city over the last three months. Which is, in my opinion, remarkable for a city of twenty-five thousand people. So, uh, we're really pleased with that. It's, uh, third month in a row that we've seen those numbers in what is traditionally our busiest time of the year, when in the warm summer months. So, um, I, we're, we're also starting a number of programs now that the school is in, that were in your report, we're going to be doing truancy operations here in the first couple of weeks of the, of the new school year. Also, on the personal status report, you saw we're down to two sworn vacancies. All of our civilian positions are full. We should have, uh, one of those vacancies filled by, by the time we have our next council meeting. And we should be totally filled within the next four to six weeks. So our staffing will be full for the first time since I've been here. So that's, that's good. And, and our next, um, public event with bringing broken neighborhoods back to life is this Saturday at Ringo Park. And I've all scheduled you different times in the dunk tank. Just let me know if those are conflicting for anybody. Otherwise, we'll, we'll see you on Saturday from ten to two at Ringo Park.
Ten to two.
That's it.
Thank, thank you. Uh, so Chief, that timeframe for those officers coming in, that'd be, that's pretty good. That's very good. I like.
I appreciate that. And also, we're going to be interviewing, um, a number of additional applicants on the twenty-ninth of this month. And our goal is to, uh, create a reserve force as well. So if we do have officers who, um, end their service with us, we'll have officers that are already in place. We can just plug, plug right in, so we won't have, uh, gaps in our staffing. So.
The other question I'm going to ask is, uh, on the special camp, the task force, you know, our, our outside help, you know, whenever we, we come in, are we, we're going to continue having that? Am I correct?
We are. I think I mentioned at the last council meeting, we're going to plan.
You had to mention your, your comments.
We're going to plan those. We won't tell you exactly when.
No, no, that's okay. That's okay.
Yeah, they're still planned. Um, normally, we try to do one every three months, but again, the dates change very, uh, but they are planned throughout the, the entire year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that. Okay.
Chief, these statistics that you provide for us, these are the same ones that you report to the FBI?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Chief, the three vacant officer positions that were filled, are they on the street patrolling right now?
No, they're in training. While they're on the street, they're just in training.
But they're not full-time yet?
Not yet, no. There's a, there's a three or four month training program before they're out on their own.
And then a year probation or?
A year probation, yes.
And our, do we have a new FTO?
And our, do we have a new FTO?
Uh, we do, um, Justin Holt, one of our officers who had been a, uh, school resource officer, decided he wanted to be a training officer. He'll be starting, in fact, he started this week in his, in his training, so.
He's a K nine off- officer.
He is a K nine officer, he is.
That's what I thought, yes, nice man.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very positive news.
Thank you.
Okay, Mike, you're up.
I did mention the restrooms, so we are very excited to have that done. Um, I do want to compliment Shane and Public Works, there's a lot of little projects that have been sitting out for a long time, just not touched, so. Um, as simple as it is, the spring, the water faucet was fixed by the pickleball courts. And, uh, just little things like that that are getting done now that, um, seem maybe minor to some people, but when you use the park on a daily basis, uh, we hear it, so. Uh, we will do a joint, uh, kind of a, not a, a re-ground opening of the basketball courts together, once the lights and, uh, the poles are put up. And, uh, we have park benches on order, so we're gonna put two park benches on the side where they can sit and watch, and then there's gonna be a picnic, a new picnic bench next to them also. And so, Shane's already agreed to put those in, so, we're excited. And then finally, the spray park is still open, we've kind of changed the hours during the week with the school, but as long as we stay in the nineties, they'll just keep it open as long as they can, and the kids are using it.
You know, you're actually right, I went by the other day, I drove by, I was, I was patrolling the streets, uh, and the kids were using the, the spray park, they were. The family of kids in there running around in the water, I liked what I saw.
Yeah, so I'll, uh, I'll continue to have it open until, until we get some rain.
Well, they're doing a rain dance on, in the water thing, uh, but thank you, Mike. Okay, next person, uh, city manager, and I know, I'm gonna give you two hats. City manager and community development.
Just two today, that's it?
Three, give you three.
Um, I'll kind of go through my list, thank you, Mayor. Um, sister cities, uh, just to give an update, we are gathering further information, kind of how that process works. Um, I'm hoping to come back to you maybe in another month to give a little more formal presentation on what that structure means, what it looks like, what other cities are doing, and what the commitments that you're gonna be involving. Um, it is a new process that the city will be in, so I really want to get a more firm grasp before I can make a formal presentation to you on that. Um, you did see a new item that you previously had in the past, I worked with Shane on getting those numbers to you as far as the affirmation on where Public Works is shifting their time and what they're doing. So, if there's any improvements or comments on that that you'd like to see, or something that's not there, please let me know, myself and Shane, and we can work together and get that done. Um, as far as the trucks that we talked about, um, Public Works did go out and assess all the signs to make sure that they are in the appropriate locations and then replace any that need to be replaced, so they are up and running. Um, the one thing I can suggest is if you do see a vehicle parked, could call police. When it comes to code enforcement, PD is enforcing the vehicles that are on the street, and code enforcement officer forces vehicles that are on the, are in the grass and stuff like that. So, if you have any concerns whether vehicles are parking in inappropriate locations, please let PD know, or you can let myself know as well, just by a simple email, and I can forward the information. I'll have to look into what the ordinance says, but there are signs posted, the vehicles can't drive into certain locations, because the city's not structured for that. Well, the signs allow us to enforce, though.
Right.
So, that's the first step.
Are there signs on order? Are there more signs that are?
They're all up.
They're all up.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And, anyone, Isaac?
Not at this time.
Okay, we'll go to our attorney. Any comments?
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, now we'll go to our, our city council reports. Uh, Yvette, you're ladies first, I'm a gentleman.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first and foremost, I would like to thank everyone for your thoughts, your prayers, and your condolences for the passing of my maternal grandmother, who, um, raised me since infancy, and I owe her a tremendous amount. And so, thank you for all of you, and, uh, that's my reason for not attending the last council meeting. And, uh, regrettably, um, my paternal grandmother just passed, and we will be laying her to rest soon as well. So, you know, the wonderful, uh, if you can look at the silver lining and things, the wonderful thing about that is it's given me the opportunity to reflect and really look at what's important in life, and so, that is a good thing. And I know that they're looking down upon us all, um, and wishing me and you well, so. Um, as far as that's concerned, now moving on about city business, I had the opportunity to attend the school district's, uh, welcome back, which was amazing, it was inspirational, and, um, very, very positive. And, uh, teachers and, and school district personnel, they have a way of doing that, you know, that is their wheelhouse, and they do it very, very well. Um, and then, uh, let's see, uh, the personal issues have kept me kind of busy, but prior to that, um, pickleball. I had the opportunity, and I want to thank Ken Robertson, he was here earlier, uh, Ken Robertson helped me, uh, teach five pickleball courses uh, throughout the month of July, so every Tuesday, we were able to teach a pickleball class to a variety of citizens in the city of Soma. Uh, at one point, we had sixteen kids out there, it was incredible. Uh, there was one family in particular that was so motivated, they went out and bought their own pickleball, uh, paddles to use from this point forward. And for anyone who may want to know, I know there are a few pickleball players in the audience right now. Um, Rotary has purchased a total of sixteen paddles, they are held, uh, they're being housed with, uh, Director Kirshner, and they're available for checkout, so if you would like to play pickleball and you don't have a paddle, or you're not sure if you're ready to invest, you may go to Parks and Rec and check those out, um, and then we will be how, holding more pickleball clinics in the fall, once the weather cools down, because it was brutal out there teaching pickleball, um, when it was a hundred and six, hundred and seven degrees. And, let's see, one last thing. I never, ever imagined that I would ever get up on stage for any reason, but there has been, there's a play that's coming to town, and the playwright is Josefina Lopez, she is a feminist Latina playwright that I have admired for many, many years, and I said, you know, I'm gonna toss my hat in the ring, and low and behold, I'm in a play. And so, it's proving to be challenging, but it's also exciting, and, and I'm looking forward to participating in that. So, come September, you'll see that, and so come on out, be happy to see you there.
What's your opening date?
Uh, Thursday, September sixth.
Other words, after that, you're going to Hollywood, right?
I'm not so sure, but, you know, it's, it's amazing how the universe works, because the part that I play is Doña Carmen, and she is really in many ways the embodiment of my both, both of my grandmothers that have passed. So, it really is a nice tribute to them, and so, hopefully, I'll make the Arts Center prep, I'm excited about that.
You know, and once again, we, we, we're our regrets to your family, the past, you know, you know, uh, that day when you weren't.
They were both ninety-six years old, they lived a long, beautiful life, they've saw many things.
Yeah, that particular day, we, we knew you weren't here, and we gave a moment of silence for your.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And we did that in your, in your honor, in your family honor. Okay, Franco?
Isaac, I don't think Yvette had time to go to her SKF meeting with all her.
I did.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, I don't know, we talked about the McCall Pipeline, we finally got funding for it, it's supposed to start in August, is it started, is it done?
At this particular point, it has not, but it will be starting soon.
Okay, because it, it's still in the same shape that was so critical months and years ago, so, we can just focus on that.
It's shovel ready.
Okay, and the other thing, Isaac, I want to get back to your comments about code enforcement, and say how important it is to the city about addressing the blight and the beautification, and, um, you know, I asked for it, this to be a discussion item, and and I understand you need more time, and staff needs more time, and, and that's fine, but we're having, like Scott said earlier, some major housing development coming. We had not had a major housing development in, I don't know, fourteen, almost fifteen years, something like that. So, let's not, let's clean up our city, let's address these issues, because we, we want to welcome people in, let's not wait until the housing development, and say, oh, you know, these, these lots, these streets, these weeds are out of control, so, let's address it now, and I hope, within the very near future, we're gonna have that discussion item, so we can have a honest, productive talk, because what we're doing as a community isn't working. And it's not to point the fingers at anybody, whether it's the way our codes are written, the way they're enforced, is it the community? But what we're doing isn't working, so we need to figure out, perhaps there's a better way of doing it. I think there is, I know the community believes there is, and I think it's way past time to address that, so, as soon as we can get that on as a discussion item, so council can talk about it, and hear the community input, I greatly appreciate it.
I will, thank, yeah, I apologize for lagging time, it really just more for, so we can get our heads wrapped around it, and make some educated decisions together. But to be able to do that, I need to get the information necessary, and figure out where all the avenues lie, what needs to be strengthened, who should be doing what, where, how do we focus our efforts? Do we need to change ordinances, do we need to address certain codes, how do we do all that?
It's, it's, it's.
It's a process, but we want to do it right.
It's a complicated issue, but we, we, we need to start, you know.
I strongly agree, and I'll make sure that I keep you updated the full way.
Alright, thank you, that's all I have.
Mike?
Um, I attended the Soma Arts Council meeting on the sixteenth. They are in the process of announcing their season coming up. I'll give you a short hint on it, uh, they're gonna do, uh, six plays, or six, uh, events, adult events, uh, four musicals and two plays. Uh, the Cool Kids are going to do two productions during the course of the year, and we're gonna put on a couple concerts in the process. So, um, it's gonna be a busy season for next year, and they're just going like crazy. That was all I did.
Um, I attended the National Night Out at the Boys and Girls Club in Cueva del Oso, got to see that, uh, movie, The Boys and Girls Club, a little ahead of time, so that was nice. Tended the Soma Unified School District kickoff event. Uh, I want to say a special thank you to the Public Works Director, Shane, um, that was awesome, he went out and cleared off the graffiti on that mailbox that we heard about from, um, Bob, who's not here any longer, left, uh, but he did that right away. He took some shoes off of a phone line right there on, on Mill Street, right away, without saying anything about it, just did it. Um, and that's what I've been hearing, you know, around town, they ask for something to be done, and you just, you get it done, no questions asked, so thank you for that. Um, I attended the Measure P meeting, um, last Wednesday, we'll be getting the, the results from that, I guess I did have a, a question from that. Um, since it's going to bid on the twenty-eighth of August, will there be, and it's gone through several incarnations, will there be any elevations that will be available um, to put out like in an easel in the public building, like in City Hall?
Yeah.
I, I looked at the bid packet on, on the website.
We're actually working on that now, so that we can bring it to you, so you can have a full scope of what the project looks like at its current state.
Great.
Um, but you are, we're putting that together right now.
Because the last time we had, uh, kind of a look at this was like a five thirty to six, it was a workshop, remember? It was the incarnation when there was like an onion dome on the top of the police station, and I understand it's morphed since then, it's changed. So it'd be nice to, uh, to see that, the way it looks now, I think the citizens would appreciate that.
Yeah, once those renderings get complete, we can definitely bring that to council for review.
Will that be soon?
And the groundbreaking will be, we're working on the invitations and everything now, um, we're scheduled for September twentieth.
Thank you for that, and then I attended the concert in the park, at Lincoln Park on Friday night, it was smoking in more ways than one, the band and the temperatures. So that was, uh, that was nice, the band was very good, they did a really nice job. And then, um, I wanted to give an update to council on that bill that we voiced our support for unanimously, AB three one seven nine from, uh, Assembly Member Ramula's office, he had sponsored it, and that's the one that'll put the, um, campaign literature in the languages of, uh, folks that make up three percent of the population, as opposed to five, including the Sikh folks here, that have a pretty large percentage, but don't have necessarily a large, uh, percentage statewide, so that cleared the assembly in April. It cleared the California Senate Appropriations Committee in August, so it's going through the senate now for a vote, and it should be going on the governor's desk by September, so that'll be very good. Um, and then I had a contact from the owner of Twenty Forty-Five Valley View, um, asking about how to clear trespassers. Uh, apparently, this gentleman went to the police station, asked for the chief, and a sergeant came out and told him that because they had been, the people had been camped there for a while, more than, I don't know what the, what the number of days is, but I think they've been there about six months now. And was told that there has to be an, an instigation or a, a beginning of, um, eviction proceedings for that. Is there a process that I can go back and let this, um, person know? Chief, maybe you could email me the step-by-step process, or I could put him in your, give him your number to call you?
You can give my direct number.
Okay.
And just to let you know, um, if they have permission to be on the land, um, then if they're there for more than ten days to press remove, we have, the owner has to go through the eviction process. If, if, if the land, if they don't have permission when the land's not posted, we can't force it either, so, sometimes we have to get the property owner to post it as no trespassing, or we can force it, if it's open land, now the rules change a little bit, or structures, I don't know if we're gonna go through it all now, but if you just want to send it.
Yeah, can you give him the step-by-step on how to do that, he's, he's gone through those steps, so, okay, I'll do that, so you'll probably get a call from him, him tomorrow, thank you. And then, uh, uh, finally, wanted to, um, also comment about, um, the, the public works and code enforcement, and how important that is to the health of our talent, you know, we talk about crime, and it's so important to have, uh, code enforcement out and to make our city, um, look good, and you can always tell when, when you can get to that person. When you know that person starts, and that person's introduced him or herself, and you can talk to him, that's, that's someone who's gonna be on it. And that's really what we, what we need in code enforcement, and I think the person we have right now, Juan, I think he's doing a, he's doing a good job, he's available. Um, but sometimes, you know, with crime, when you're short-staffed and PD, they, they can't be everywhere, you know, I get people calling me constantly, all the time about the drug dealing in their neighborhood, the gang activity, and the PD just doesn't have the staffing to be there and conduct stings or manpower, or whatever you call it, to be there and, and watch this, so there's another tack, and that's calls for service. So everybody needs to be the eyes and ears of PD and just keep calling, you know, and letting PD know that there's a nuisance there. And, you know, sometimes, the person who's causing the trouble, like this person was saying that came tonight, is a renter. And the way you handle that, you should go to the landlord, and you send the landlord a letter that this person, your, your tenant's causing problems, and the more problems, the more times the PD comes out, the more you're gonna pay. And, you know, since PD can't be out there to enforce all the time, that's a really good thing, and that, that makes code enforcement really, really important to, um, reducing blight and making our city look good and making it livable for the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. I'm, I'm the last, okay. Um, I, I, um, went back to, um, I attended back to school, uh, that event, and, uh, and the event was, "We Believe," am I correct? Believe in me. And, uh, and, and it's a great, it was a great kickoff, and I also attended the night out. Um, I, I had two events, because that particular event, I had to, uh, cut it short, because it was my anniversary, I didn't want to die that night. You know, and so, I, I attended the boys' clubs and, uh, and, huh, in the Shockley Terrace Apartments. And then, uh, also attended Measure P meeting, uh, behind the scenes there, uh, what's going on, and, uh, Chief was giving an update, and the people in the, were giving in, uh, input. And, uh, also attended, uh, an event in Fresno, um, uh, Betty E. came down from the state of California. Um, I, uh, got to, uh, talk to her a little bit, Isaac, you know, uh, I gave her my card too, as well. Uh, but, uh, and, um, I'm hoping, you know, I, I try to reach out to the, to the, uh, these, uh, how would I say, entities of government, that way they knew who Soma is, but also, uh, I'm gonna get back to Franco's issue, uh, as far as the, uh, the streets, you know, everything, uh, in the community. Uh, the streets are getting better, if you look at the parks, they're greener. Thanks, Shane, you're doing a good job. Uh, and the crime, uh, is starting to go down, uh, thanks to the chief bringing law enforcement. Uh, and the crime, uh, is starting to go down. Uh, thanks to the chief bringing law enforcement extra, coming in their community. It's working, you know, and, uh, keep doing it. And, uh, and also fill the vacancies. That helps a lot. But also, uh, as far as trash in the street and everything, the beautification community, thank you, guys. Char, guys out there, thank you. You are stepping up to the plate, and hey, you are attacking the, the areas in our community. Uh, Freeway Ninety-Nine off-ramp, it's clean. Bushes are, are trimmed and everything. Thank you, Scott, being on call for helping make it happen. Uh, you know, uh, things in our community are moving slowly, you know. Uh, house development is moving positive. Uh, and the Highland Development, uh, it's moving. And our new development, uh, I'm hoping Larry Raven's operation, I don't know where we're at, but he'll be moving forward. And, uh, the Amberwood Project is moving forward in our community. Uh, things are looking good. Uh, it's slowly, but it's moving. As far as code enforcement, uh, we, uh, it's getting better. Don't get me wrong, Isaac, we know, and you addressed on the issue pretty good. Thank you. Uh, and it is moving forward. Uh, and I, I, and I think, I, overall, the community of Salma is moving in the right direction. And I thank the people that work for the city of Salma. They're a part of that big entity that make it work, make it happen. I know you might sometimes be short-staffed, you're under the gun, all the way from, uh, from Reyna, Reyna. Thank you. Or you got, you carry a lot of hats. I, I thank you. I put you on the spot, didn't I? But, but you know what? But I thank all the workers and, and the citizens, cause they're a part of our community. They're making it happen, and they care. And those people that came tonight, they care about their community. They, I like when they come and tell us what is going on. Cause they, I know they care about what's happening in their, in their, in their community. And we're, we are slowly addressing those issues. Uh, there's some laws that we have to jump through, uh, property owners. But, um, I know that issue on Valley View, Scott, totally. I've been aware of it more than that. But we are moving forward. Uh, I'm hoping that, uh, the property owner will, uh, help us there, Isaac. That particular, behind that encampment. Um, and there's some, there's some areas in our community that need, uh, to be addressed. I know that. And I think, uh, the people that are coming forward are telling us where they're at. And the phone calls are making it happen, and we are doing what we can to make it happen. It is a slow process, but it is, but I like to see it faster, but, uh, it can't happen. I know that can't happen right away, but we are moving in the right direction. And I thank you guys, and I thank the citizens out there. That's all I gotta say. Okay. So my, on my comment, now, this, this, uh, okay, oral communication. This is a notice to-
A public, a public can come forward and address the city council regarding any item on the city, uh, within the city council jurisdiction. No, no action or discussion will be taken on the agenda. The issue will be referred back to the city manager for review. A member of the public has a remark of three minutes, and you state your name, and you're on.
Teresa Herrera, Thirty-Five Twenty-Six Hill Street. I'm super pleased with, with the chief reported. That's awesome. Our city is starting to look really great. And Public Works is doing a great job. Our streets are clean. And I wanted to thank Leslie Nelson. She's not here tonight, but she's doing great with getting people together to clean. And the reason I came up here is just because I just want a little bit of clarification as a citizen and taxpayer. So how much money do we pay Townsend? They're the grant writers, right?
Yep.
Three thou-, okay, so I just, my question is, why do we pay them and also, um, have-
Chris Com?
Have, uh, Chris Com, yeah. When Chris Com does exact, the, Chris Com, uh, is also a grant writer. And I just asked the lady if they were gonna write grants for us, that they would only charge a little bit more. So we're actually paying, what, ten thousand, nine thousand dollars a month?
Well, initially what it was is, uh, Chris Com at the time didn't do grant writing. And so we had to find a grant writer at that time, and then, so we have a lobbyist, and we have grant, that's why it was separated.
But it sounds like, um-
It used to have Townsend at one time.
Okay.
And we got them exclusively to do grant writing. And they did a couple of grants, none of which were fruitful. Um, and then we discovered the irregularity. And so, um, they weren't the right fit for the city anymore, and then we ended our contract with them. And then that's when Chris Com came on.
Oh, so we don't have a contract with, uh, Townsend anymore then?
We, we ended a contract with them.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because it wasn't quite the right fit. And then, uh, when we had City Manager Perea on board, he had used Townsend in another capacity when he was doing other work. And so he brought them on, not realizing the full scope of Chris Com. And so now we have two, but their duties are split. So they're, to the best of my knowledge, Isaac, there is no overlap.
That's correct.
So we're paying nine thousand dollars a month when we could practically, we could be paying like five thousand a month? So when is Townsend's contract up?
I think we have an opt-out option.
I'm sure we do. I don't know the timeframe.
So, doesn't it make sense to not have both of these companies? If, if one of them can do it all, why are we paying so much money a month? Isn't this like our tax money?
Haven't done at all. So Townsend came on board and immediately got an active transportation, uh, um, grant. They got another grant, and then-
So they did do something?
They did do something, and there was some allegation about some application not being filled out properly, and the majority decided to go in another direction. So then Henry Perea came in as city manager and brought them back after lots of good experience with them. And I've been asking to have Townsend come to the city council and talk about what they've been doing, to give them a, a fair shake at it, which interim city manager Moreno says they're going to be doing. Um, Chris Com, on the other hand, has gotten one appropriation, working through Joaquin Ramula's office. They didn't do it. They worked with Joaquin Ramula's office. They assisted, and since then, they have not brought anything into the city. So that's why I was, um, questioning that tonight, and just asking. I think they're fine people, a fine company. But when they're not producing, I think, you know, they need to be held accountable, just like Townsend. And so, you know, whoever's bringing it in and getting results, I think they should get the contract.
Right.
And so I would add to that also that, um, you can compare, let's say, an ATP grant, which is anywhere near the appropriation that Joloi brought in. So if you, you can't really look at numbers in that respect. But what we need to look at return on investment. And so when we look at that ROI number, that number which Joloi and, and Chris Com is far more significant. And I think the other thing that we need to look at is, we need to look at how our staff deals directly with Chris Com or with Townsend. How does our staff interact with them? And see, and measure that as well. And so I think our staff that has to work directly with either firm should have some say as to-
So when the mayor and I were in Las Vegas at the International, um, Convention of Shopping Centers, Chuck came up to us and said, you know, we're, we're dealing with some developer, but we, we can't talk to you. And I, and I had no idea what that meant, because we've always talked to him before. And my, I have an open door to Mr. Joloi, and I would hope that he would make contact with me. I haven't heard from Mr. Joloi in, in, in a long time. I did hear from our interim city manager stating, well, you know, this contract's coming up, and they haven't done anything for the city in years. What should we be doing? So, um, that got my attention, and so we need to be looking at return with Townsend as well as with Mr. Joloi and Chris Com. Uh, we have to look out for the taxpayers.
Exactly, and that's kind of why I brought it up, that I'm hoping that all of you up there will realize that you're paying nine thousand dollars a month when maybe you don't need to be spending that much money. And figure out which one is doing the best job, and maybe get, I don't know, can you get rid of one? Does one do one thing, and somebody else does something else? Or can they all do?
So you saw the vote. The vote was two years.
Whether it's month-to-month, or if it's a contract, all this has an opt-out.
Well, I hope that you will do good for our city and our tax money.
Oh, I know, I'll be watching.
Thank you.
State your name.
My name's John Trillo. Um, Thirty-Six Ten Hill Street, Salma, California. Uh, the question I have for you guys in general is, is this administrative form of government or management form of government? Because right now, you guys are making decisions, as I feel, that some, some of you are saying that you want to go back to the public. You were elected. And I'm just saying this in general. There are, your body should be imposing policies, and let your staff do the investigation. Do the pros, the cons, bring them back to you. And with those initial policies that you've stated, let your staff start working. It's never gonna be better in Salma until you guys relieve, and you guys put some stern policies in this community that your staff would adhere and feel strong about. You guys just talked about CDBG, G, CDBG money, like it was brand new. It's been in existence for many years. Your city council should have already had a five-year, ten-year, twenty-year plan. So when you talk, are you gonna go talk to the public of every CDBG money? You do not do that. You don't go to a gross guy, you don't sell gross guy cookies. You guys are setting policy. You guys should be the governing board of this municipal government. Make it as strong as it can, and let your leaders, the city chief, the administrator, the public works, let them adhere to your policies and be a strong government. This is just me speaking in general. I'm just kind of blown away. CDBG money's been here for a long time. There's a lot of streets in this community that are not, they're not just broken, they're unsafe. But if you go and you're gonna say you're gonna go back to the community and talk to them, everybody in this community, even I, have a special, a special interest. But you know what? You guys were elected to look at the overall feeling of what's the better make for this future of this Salma. Not for any particular person. It's for an outlook that you guys all should get together and say, you know what? This is where we're gonna go. This is the street we're gonna go. I'm, I'm sorry, but there's just too much. We can't individually be talking to everyone, because you guys, when you guys were elected, you were sworn to protect the city of Salma. Financial, good, bad, we take the responsibility. Some of you guys are asking, and I, and I might go over thirty minutes, but some, three minutes, but some of you guys are asking about economics, about the financing, the betterment of our community, how we spend our money. Some of you voted for a city manager that was gonna, gonna get indicted. That's waste of money. So when we start, we're talking rhetoric. Let's be true. Let's accept what's wrong, let's accept what's good. But at the same time, do your homework, guys. CDBG money's been a long time. It's been here a long time. Alright? So I ask you guys, start doing your homework. Some of the people come up here, cause they have their motives. But at the end of the day, I'm a business owner, and you know what? We gotta start doing our homework. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, state your name and-
Again, my name's Selena. I'm inspired by what you just said, because I come back, every time I come back, I come back often, and I see the same thing, broken neighborhoods in the barrio, along the high school where my parents live, I, you know, see landlords that are irresponsible, that don't fix things, and again, vulnerable communities. It's in front of us. I come back here, and it makes me sad sometimes that, you know, there is stuff happening. There is positive, and I don't mean to poop on that at all, but we need to start thinking about the future. There is climate change. There's a lot of social issues. It's all systemic. Everything comes back. The po-, like, poor people aren't just coming here because they're coming here. I live in San Francisco. It's a lot of homeless people because there's unaffordable housing. It's trickling down. There's too many rich people getting rich, and people are poor, not because they want to be poor, it's because the system of historic racial injustices, and the wealthy get wealthier. It's not an accident. If Salma's gonna lead, we're the biggest rural town. If we're gonna be a leader of all the rural communities, we need to, we need to start partnerships with the other towns. We need to start thinking about the future. Again, I'm here. I came from San Francisco today. I'm leaving tomorrow. I'm gonna come every three weeks. Please reach out. I have, uh, a network there that wants to help Salma. And if we can, we can help other rural communities. We just need to start a project around education, around crime. Crime has increased, I've heard around, talking to people. Sometimes I don't think arresting them is the answer, because what's, where's the programs after when they get out? You know, I've heard gang violence has increased. It's not ideal. But we can't just keep sending people to jail. It's not the answer. We can't be arresting homeless people. It's not the answer. We have to get stronger as a community. We can't just be locking people away. We can't be shutting our doors. Uh, we can't be calling ICE and arresting people. You know, we're all a community. We have to get better if we're gonna be here for the future. My vision for Salma is one, you know, there's investments in renewable energy. We don't need to be on fossil fuels. We need affordable housing. We need art. We need education. You know, I'm really glad that Mark was here with the kids. We need more of that. And, yeah, use me as a resource. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Nobody else? Make a most to adjourn. No move.